Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs is called to order. It's Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. In room, cap, conference room 325. First on the agenda today is HB 1066 related to criminal history record check. And first up is Sarah Hirokami, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon Chair Nakashima and members of the committee. Thank you for this opportunity. So the University of Hawaii did submit written testimony on this bill, which we will stand on today. But I will be here to respond to any questions that the committee members may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that is actually all the testimony we have on this particular measure of members in question.
Ms. Hirokami, is it really snowing where you are? Beautiful background.
I, I apologize. This is my February backdrop, so when it turns March, I'll look for something with flowers. Thanks.
It's the scene of the mainland in many cities right now. Very provocative and decorative. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you remember if there are any other questions? Okay, if not, then we will move on to House Bill. 225, related to bullying. First up, we have the Department of Education.
Oh, hi. Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and Vice Chair Matuyoshi. My name is Heidi Armstrong from the Department of Education, speaking on behalf of Superintendent Kishimoto. The department stands on its written testimony supporting the intent of House Bill 225 HD1, and we offer comments. The department supports the public reporting of our discipline data. And our testimony shares the reporting processes in place and feel that these processes are comprehensive and sufficient. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Do you only, uh, testify that we have scheduled to be with us today? Are any questions? Representative Ward.
Ms. Armstrong, we have been dealing with bullying for years and years and years. Do you have any number as to the efficacy of what we've done so far versus now being this bill to be another fix of what's going on?
Well, our bullying numbers have decreased. I, I don't want to rest on last year's numbers. Last year was a significant decrease and, and we know.
How small were they? If I may interrupt you, how small were the numbers and how big were the?
Last year, 2019 and 2020, we had 257 reported bullying incidences compared to 2018, 2019, where there were 511. We do know we were out of school fourth quarter, so that had some impact, but we still saw a decline. And we attribute this when we do have revised Chapter 19, which are our end results, our end measures. But all schools have a comprehensive multi-tiered system of support in which they define what are their common, their preventive measures? And what are their common school-wide expectations and practices in creating a culture of responsibility and respect? And then they, in tiers to the higher tiers, they've put in additional interventions for students who do have difficulty with the tier one expectations and support. So there has been a lot of time attention to bullying and developing ways also for students to report bullying, whether it's acknowledging who's doing the reporting or anonymously through our Speak Now Bullying app. And that's been rolled out to middle school and high school students as another venue to report incidences that we do not condone and are detrimental to our students.
Theoretically, this bill should cause a decrease again, except for one factor. And if I recall the data, 80% were caused by 20% of the schools. Or in fact, a couple of schools had really high, high numbers. Is that still the case where it's not really across the, the whole public school sector? But it's primarily in a small handful that comprises the majority of the bully.
We, we have our discipline data by schools posted on our website. And, and there are areas where there's more, there, there's a lot of factors involved in that data as well, which is why that comprehensive support system is so important. Because in order to eliminate bullying, which is our goal, we've got to get to a lot of root causes that cause bullying. And oftentimes, those causes extend beyond the walls of the school building. And so we need to involve families, communities, as well as school to help students get the social emotional supports that they need, which in turn influences their actions toward others.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Thank you, Chair.
And thank you very much, members. Any other questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Representative Lopresti.
Thank you, Chair. Good to see you, Ms. Armstrong.
Likewise.
I have some concerns. There's a lot of testimony, the first couple of times this bill's been heard, pretty much all in support, even the Hawaii Republican Party has offered testimony supporting this. The only people who seem to think that nothing needs to be done is Superintendent Kishimoto. Not to say that you're not doing anything, but this, this bill helps put into statute what the, what, what bullying is. Yes, you're right that I think we need to address the causes of it. But don't you think we also need to define it clearly? And that's partly what this bill does.
Right, and, and we have in our Chapter 19, our new guidelines that were just, that were recently revised. And we have the definitions of bullying and harassment. And what these new guidelines also do, which was what this bill is asking for, is ensuring that the families are aware of the actions taken. And this bill, or the, the Chapter 19 guidelines do require the schools to report to both the victim and the victim's family, as well as the, the child doing the bullying, reporting to his or her family as well. What happened, what the follow-up actions will be for that incident? And that is written in our Chapter 19 guidelines.
So that's, that's great. This is just going to put it in statute, but thank you. Thank you, Chair.
And thank you very much, members. Any other questions? Okay, if not, then we will move on. House Bill 288, related to transportation. We have one, one testimony in support. They are not joining us today. Moving on to House Bill. 237, related to constitutional amendments. Corey Rosenly.
Thank you, Chair Nakashima. Rosenly. Okay. I'm sorry, can you hear me, Chair Nakashima?
Oh, yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. HSTA supports HB 337. This would basically require the language and meaning of any proposed constitutional amendment to be simple and concise and direct, and also get a written opinion from the court to see if anything invalidates a constitutional ratification question. In April 23rd, 2018, the Hawaii State Senate passed Senate Bill 2922, a proposed constitutional amendment to create an additional source of revenue for our public schools by an overwhelming vote of 23 to 1. The Senate vote followed the State House on April 10th, okay, which the representatives unanimously approved this bill. A few months later, October 2018, the Hawaii Supreme Court invalidated that question on general election ballots. If this bill had been passed, the Supreme Court would have had a rule on the language. It would have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on this constitutional amendment and a lot of our time. And would have given us an opportunity to modify it before it went to the public. At the end of the day, when this bill was denied, you know, it did hurt our schools and our cakey. And I hope that the legislature will pass this bill to avoid what happened to us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you remember that's the, the testify we have scheduled for this particular bill? Any questions, Representative Ward?
Mr. Rosenly, what particular words ended up nixing the constitutional amendment that you're referring to? I mean, I remember it happened, but I don't remember the specific words that kind of took.
Thank you, Representative. Basically, at the time, the Supreme Court felt, I will never agree with this, that, that the public wouldn't understand the constitutional amendment question. I thought it was straightforward. I think it complied exactly with the law. I, I think it was very easy to understand for people who are doing it, but the Supreme Court ruled differently. So I wouldn't want anyone to go through what we went through.
Could you read it? Could you read it? So we'll see what.
I, I know, I don't have it right in front of me. Sorry, Representative.
Oh, okay. Because if it was simple, concise and direct. But here's the one thing that we've cut out on this particular bill, that it neither be misleading nor deceptive. Was it misleading or deceptive when the Supreme Court said, hey, you can't understand it if you're not? I mean, you, that you couldn't understand it? Was that, is that an issue, deceptivity or that it was a bit misleading?
If you're asking me, no. I mean.
It was clear as, as I said to you.
And I do, I'll pull up the language. It says, shall the legislature be authorized to establish, as provided by law, a surcharge on investment real property to be used to support public education? Seems pretty direct to me.
Yeah, it sounded pretty direct. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other, any further questions? Okay, if not, we will move on to House Bill 1288, related to government. We have two testimonies in support, however, none of them are joining us today. So we will move on. House Bill 61, related to non-general funds. We have William Ilah, DHL.
Oh, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair, Matuyoshi, members of the committee, Deputy Director Tather Gomes, on behalf of Chairman William Ilah, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, will stand on our written testimony in opposition to part one of the bill as it relates to Hawaiian homelands. And we're happy to answer any questions you folks have.
Okay, thank you very much. Tamia Machika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Not present. Okay, members, that's all the testimony that we have scheduled to be with us today. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. House Bill 894, related to the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center fees. House Bill 894 related to the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center fees. We have Christopher Young, Attorney General.
Thank you, Chair. This is Christopher Young, Administrator of the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. The department submitted testimony, will stand by that testimony. And we are available for any questions the committee may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Your members, that's the only testify we have scheduled for us for this particular measure. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. House Bill 320 related to historic preservation. We have Alan Downer, DLNR.
Good afternoon, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm Alan Downer. I'm the Administrator of the State Historic Preservation Division. Department stands on its written testimony and support. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members, that's the only testify we have scheduled to be before us on that matter. Any questions? Representative Warren.
Mr. Downer?
Yes, sir.
The last testifier, sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Alan Downer.
Are you there, Alan?
I am, sir.
Who's illegally digging up what that this bill is trying to prevent? Is there archaeological diggings going on that are unauthorized? Or what, what's happening out in the, in the real world there regarding this bill?
So we, we do know that there are, there are some instances of people digging up archaeological sites who are not authorized to do so. You know, it's a little hard to pursue or to quantify that because we get reports so rarely of that. More frequently, we get reports of, of consulting firms doing work that is not consistent with the work that was approved by, by the department as part of the 6C compliance process. People deciding to change an archaeological monitoring plan that's been approved or altering mitigation commitments and so on without prior approval.
Are they specifically developers and EV bones and the likes? Or you're talking about other archaeological phenomenon?
Sometimes they are burials, sometimes they are just archaeological, you know, other types of archaeological remains.
And how many instances have you had of this?
We get between a hundred and a hundred and fifty reports a year.
Well, these are people digging up sites that they shouldn't be on. What's an example of a site where they're digging and they shouldn't be?
Well, I, you know, since some of those are under investigation, I, I would prefer not to give details. But an example would be, you know, an archaeologist is contracted to monitor the excavation of, of a trench for, you know, for example, for a utility company. And then they, you know, and, and they don't actually conduct the monitoring, or they do the monitoring incompletely, or in a manner not consistent with the actual, that there would be a monitoring plan approved by the department before, before the work is started. And so, you know, if they, if they, they deviate from that monitoring plan, you know, that, that, under this amendment, it would be a violation. One of the problems with, of course, with people not doing the monitoring is that it's impossible to tell when something has been damaged by construction.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, members. Any other questions? Representative Mokamura.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Downer, I have a follow-up question. I wanted to ask you about the enforcement, if this civil and administrative violation process goes through. Who would be enforcing?
Well, the, the investigation would be conducted by DoCare, supported by, you know, given some technical support by the State Historic Preservation Division. Based on the result of the investigation, the State Historic Preservation Division would develop a report and make a recommendation on what penalty to be assessed and present that to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. So it would be the Board of Natural Resources, Land and Natural Resources, that would be approving the enforcement action.
And is DoCare currently doing this for your division?
They do do it when we request it, yes.
And do you feel they have the resources to add this to their list of things to do?
Well, I would prefer not to speak for DoCare, but I would say they don't have the resources to do any of the jobs that they're assigned to do. I just think they're, I think they're under-resourced. I think that's the reality.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Members, any further questions? Okay, if not, we'll move on to HB 823 related to public land liability. We have Kurt Cottrell, DLNR.
Hey, good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. Kurt Cottrell, Administrator for the Division of State Parks. We stand on our written testimony in strong support. I would just like to add, you know, we're really grateful that you guys are hearing this measure. You see in the testimony, Act 190 was twenty-five years ago. Act 82, which was then subsumed by Act 86, is eighteen years ago. And in the ensuing time, all the previous members of the Task Force on Beach and Ocean Safety and the Risk Assessment Working Group have, they're long gone. We haven't reappointed them for like over a decade. And we've institutionalized the, the method by which we evaluate and put in both the beach and MAK, you know, warning signs. And as the testimony says, we're not actively adding a lot of new real estate to the inventory. So it's mainly, we're moving into a maintenance and replacement mode on these signs. And so in the interest of flexibility and just rapidly being able to install signs, we feel it's more prudent to simply, you know, give that authority in terms of approval to either the respective mayor or the, the Chair of the department. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Nahia Lani Webster, Hawaii Association for Justice.
Thank you, Chair and members of the committee. Nahia Webster, on behalf of Hawaii Association for Justice, submitting comments. And we stand on our testimony, available if you have questions.
Thank you very much. Your members, that's the testifiers we have scheduled for us to be before us for this bill. Any questions? Okay, sensing none, we will move on. House Bill 446 related to motor vehicles. We have Michael Kitchens, Stolen Stuff Hawaii. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Okay, let's try this again. I'm Michael Kitchens. I'm the creator and administrator of Stolen Stuff Hawaii, which is Hawaii's largest anti-crime group. I did some testimony, but I just want to add essentially that, you know, I run a community of, of thousands of Hawaii citizens. And the catalytic converter issue is a very difficult topic. I, it is something that is extremely harmful to the community, both in time, it, it affects them from a financial standpoint. And it essentially can disrupt their lives in a major, major fashion. It is well beyond just simple property crime. It's, it may come across as being just property crime, but really, it's something that will affect their life in, in a great number of ways. If you disable someone's ability to get to work, take their children to childcare, just, you know, to whatever their, their, their current needs are, you know? Taking away their ability to drive is, is something that can majorly impact them. In addition, the theft of a catalytic converter actually can be difficult to repair because many of the vehicles that are high-target vehicles, there's already a waiting list for some of these catalytic converters. So it puts a huge, huge burden on the people that are affected by this. Now, when it comes to the actual theft of the catalytic converters themselves, I really think that just punishing those who, those who actually do the crime is not enough. I think there needs to be more focus on the actual people or the companies that purchase the catalytic converter. There's many rumors and much information that we get sent to us that there's actually companies that send out lists requesting for specific catalytic converters. And there's a lot of under-the-table stuff that happens. And the only way to really kind of stop this, this whole, and I would have to say it's a bit of a pandemic or epidemic when it comes to cats. We have to do more to punish those who would actually purchase it. If the people have no, if these criminals have no place to actually purchase the, pardon me, to sell the item, then the theft of them will, will go down. It, it quite literally takes only seconds for them to steal a catalytic converter. And we've seen them done in broad daylight to, when it's raining and pouring. It, it happens no matter where you park your car, really. They can be in and out in just a matter of moments. So I really think that, you know, this bill is appropriate. I think honestly that it should probably be made stronger in some ways. One of the ways I could suggest is possibly suggesting for the dealerships, the owners or the manufacturers to stamp the catalytic converters with the VIN number, similar to how they used to do with windows. And that's my suggestion. And I thank you for your time and I appreciate it. Please support this bill.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Melissa Pavasek, Schnitzer Steel Hawaii.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Mariyoshi, and members of the committee. I'm here today on behalf of Schnitzer Steel Hawaii. We're affiliated with one of the leading metals recycling organizations in the country. And we work very closely with law enforcement on metals theft issues. Of, of course, catalytic converters, but copper and other metals. So we thank and applaud this measure. We support it. We are asking that Hawaii consider a narrowly crafted exception for some of the requirements when it is a towing company or other licensed muffler dealer, et cetera, for the business-to-business transaction. But this would not in any way diminish the efforts at the sale of an individual catalytic converter or people who are attempting to sell directly to Schnitzer Steel. We would support the requirements on the consumer-to-business transaction. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Your members, that's all of the testimony that we have scheduled for us on this particular measure. Representative Ward.
Mr. Kitchens, please. Mr. Kitchen, are you there?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you for all the good things you do. You are very popular in my district, all the information that you share.
Thanks, sir.
Catalytic converters, you're saying there should be harsher penalties? How harsh are you talking about? Cutting people's arms off or what?
I, I think really what this crime is something that it gets put into the system and it just ends up being a revolving door. We can see the same people doing the same crime over and over again on SSH. SSH is not an official reporting. We're not even really a full-time organization, you know? So what we see on our, our group is, is a huge amount, though. So, and it's from the same people, like I said. So when it comes to actually harsher measures, I think there needs to be a greater impact on those that actually commit the crime itself. And I guess when I say harsher measures, I just mean, maybe, I know it's being listed as a Class E felony, but I think that there should be, it should be easier, I guess, to make sure that the punishment goes through. If they're caught with the evidence, if they're... I, I think what I really, what I'm trying to say is that the prosecution is the most difficult part of this. You know, it's a revolving door right now, and the pandemic has actually made it worse. And because of this revolving door, it's just made it very difficult for our community to, to get past this issue.
The second question I have is, which constituents that we have should be alert? In other words, what vehicles are the ones that they mostly target in what situations? And how they might be.
Well, the high-dollar ones are really the ones that are getting hit the most hard. And when I say that high dollar, I mean like the Prius. In these Prius, they have like a, a lot of those materials, the high-dollar value, that materials within them, they're getting the heart hit the hardest. So any of the newer, you know, energy-efficient, you know, hybrid vehicles are getting hit hard. But realistically, it's any car. It could be a car sitting up on blocks. It doesn't matter because they all have those materials within them.
And what do they do? Who, who, who takes the materials and then who buys the stuff? I mean, do they take it, give it to the guy who gives the money? Does the guy melt it down and then sell it to China? Or what's the food chain look like?
I'm not too actually familiar, and I think actually the previous witness who just testified actually or may be able to answer that better. But I do know that the whole point of stealing the cats, of course, is to get those specific materials. They sell them to scrap, to automotive, for example, like tow yards. They do sell them to tow yards. They do sell them to anybody that basically has the ability to recycle these materials. That could be an auto yard. It could be anybody that takes in vehicles that has those types of parts on it. So really, they can sell to anybody.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kitchen. Is the Schnitzer Steel still on and does have an answer to that? What happens to, if it's melted down? Where does it go?
Rep Ward, excuse me, this is Melissa. I apologize, I don't know exactly what happens. I know that I've been on a tour of our yard in Kapole many times. And that the metal overall is shredded into fist-sized pieces and shipped off the island so that we do not have rusting and old vehicles here. But specifically about catalytic converters, I would have to get back to you about what the process is for recycling them, the metal.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Representative Lopresti.
The Stolen Stuff Hawaii guy.
Yes, sir.
Hi, how you doing? Thank you for your testimony. I really appreciate the point that you make about we need to hold, make sure we hold people accountable who buy and sell these things. Would that then basically, who in your experience are the people buying and selling these things? Scrapyards, right?
I can't, yes, primarily, you know, scrapyards, auto tow yards, you know, anything, any garage that basically. We have seen physical lists of coming from companies. And I do have a copy of one, for example, that shows, you know, how much they would pay for each cat. You know, the type of cat, you know, what type of car it was from. So it is out there.
So, no, I asked that. Sorry, I, I asked that because the, the testimony from Schnitzer Steel is explicitly asking to exclude scrap dealers, repair shops, the people who would buy and sell these things. And so it would seem that if we want the bill to be effective, we, we definitely should not be accepting the proposal by Schnitzer Steel to exempt those people, right?
I will have to say that my experience is limited in who actually purchased the, purchased them. So I think that we would have to look at it in a closer detail and discuss with these people that actually go out and purchase them. Because I've never done it. I just going off of what's been passed around, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
And thank you very much. Representative Mariyoshi.
Yeah, can Schnitzer Steel respond to that, please?
Thank you, Representative Mariyoshi. The, the request that we submitted was simply for the business-to-business transactions. We understand that scrap dealers need to be assured that an individual who may have stolen a catalytic converter cannot simply come and sell it to us. But we do have muffler shops and towing companies who should have the obligation to assure that they did not receive stolen goods, also selling scrap metal to us. We have a significant problem with derelict vehicles, especially on Oahu. And ensuring that towing companies and muffler shops can recycle metal.
And ensuring that towing companies and muffler shops can recycle metal through Schnitzer so that the scrap metal can be removed from the island is important. So we're asking for a very narrowly tailored exception, not to limit in any way, shape or form the efforts to crack down on catalytic converter theft. That is essential and we support it. Thank you.
Okay, members, any further questions?
I, I have a follow-up then, please.
Representative Lo Presti.
So Ms. Pavalec, the, the reading the testimony, the suggested language you have, what am I misunderstanding then? Because if I read it quote, you want to include that basically if it's sold by anyone other than a manufacturing industrial or commercial vendor that generates or sells catalytic converters in the ordinary course of his business, such as a licensed scrap dealer, you guys, towing companies, muffler repair shops, you guys are exempt. That's exactly the language you're suggesting. What am I?
We would be exempt when we receive it from a, a business that is required to get the information. If, if someone others, if a, some, anyone other than an industrial client showing company comes to us, we would also have the obligation to comply with this law. So any, anyone who first receives a catalytic converter from a person, not someone who is in the business of doing transactions with us, such as a towing company, we, we would, or they would have the obligation to collect this information. That language and that narrow exception is taken from another state's law. And there are many other states that have this narrowly crafted exception.
So when I look at page four, line 12, where you want to add it in, it says to, if they want to sell it, they have to tell you exactly what they're selling, who issued it, the date of sale.
Yes. There's, there's data, there's information and documentation collection requirements in this bill that should apply when a person sells a catalytic converter, but not necessarily when a business like a muffler shop sells us in bulk vehicles to get off the island. So.
But it doesn't say that, right? It doesn't say.
Says anyone else, so anyone other than these narrowly defined exceptions would be subject to the bill. And only the business to business transaction between the towing company and a few other industrial sectors selling to Schnitzer. And that was the intent of that exception. And I apologize if we didn't quite exactly get the words right.
I haven't had coffee since 10:00 AM, so maybe, maybe that's wearing on me. It's just my concern is, is like when you look at, what's the word, provenance? What is this an art we're talking about? But the provenance of the item is traced in, in, in the, the way the language is set up right now. And with that suggested language, it cuts off that provenance. So that while you Schnitzer Steel, your, your client Schnitzer Steel may be innocent in purchasing something from somebody who's a muffler shop who comes and sells it to you, by not requiring that provenance and proof of, of where they got it from. If they're crooked, then that enables, that continues to enable the black market for catalytic converters. That's my concern and, and therefore I would be, I, I hesitate to, to support that inclusion of language. But I appreciate your time. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, see none, we will move on to House Bill 1109 related to administrative rulemaking. We have two individuals providing comments and support. However, none of them are scheduled to be with us today. Moving on to House Bill 540 relating to liability. We have Michael Visser, Attorney General's Office. Not here. Collette Masanaga, Queens Health System.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Colette Masanaga here on behalf of the Queens Health System. Will stand in our testimony in support of this measure. We did want to note that we have offered amendments to narrow the scope of the bill, noting concerns in the last committee from other testifiers. One note in terms of that the amendment is located in B3 of the bill. To change, we request a fight amendment to have it state that a healthcare provider is engaged in the emergent care function directly related to the dispersion of a state of emergency or a local state emergency. We're here and available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Nahalani Webster, Hawaii Association for Justice.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Nahalani Webster on behalf of Hawaii Association for Justice, testifying in opposition to HB 540, the HG1 is currently drafted. While we greatly appreciate the work of our healthcare industry, we have to also speak for those who are our most vulnerable. Our kapuna, those in senior nursing home facilities as well as are sick and those in needs of care. If this measure was to pass, it would deprive our most vulnerable from being able to seek justice in our court system. One example is recently on the Big Island in a senior care home facility. It was unfortunate that there were so many COVID-related deaths that occurred. This bill would in effect prevent those families from seeking justice. And that's why we oppose the measure. I just also want to mention to the committee that we appreciate. We met with Queens separately to have some dialogue to see if we could come to some common grounds. And we appreciate working with them and thank them for their time. We're available if you have any questions.
And thank you very much. Next, we have Susan Picola Davis.
Hello. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairs and members of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. I looked at this bill from the perspective of a patient or myself. So my testimony today is only about questions I have that aren't clear for me concerning the measure. For instance, I have been unable to locate the document referred to as Hawaii State Crisis Standards of Care Triage Allocation Framework. I understand that many healthcare professionals came together to put this together, but not being able to read it, it makes me question what's in it? And could that be posted on the Department of Health website? It's important that each and every one of you be able to read the document to clearly understand the meaning of crisis standards of care as it pertains to Hawaii's healthcare facilities and the public. Why is the broadness of immunity, including hurricanes and earthquakes as examples? I have not, I do not recall any past emergencies that would support employing crisis standards of care for hurricanes or earthquakes. Has the crisis standards of care been employed in any healthcare facility since the beginning of the panda, pandemic? This could be a preventive measure, but in, but still knowing the contents of what the crisis standards of care are, which probably differentiate from normal standards of care. If the bill passes, how would the public be notified of the healthcare facilities employing crisis standards of care? Will there be signage at the entrance to the facility or ER? Will ambulances be diverted if a healthcare facility is employing crisis standards of care and may have a patient in their ambulance that they could divert to another healthcare facility? And for those of you who have parents, if you have, if you have been able to see the document, crisis standards of care, would you be satisfied with those standards of care for your loved ones? I'm only asking this because I care about our kapuna as much as I care about anybody that is a resident of Hawaii, that we just have knowledge of what this contains. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you listening to me. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Members, that's all the testimony we have scheduled to be before us for this particular measure. Are there questions? Representative Ward?
Queens Hospital, please. Are you there?
Yes.
What behavior are we trying to defend or protect against? Or incidences that we want to prevent from happening and therefore need immunity or liability that would not be covered by, say, for example, malpractice injury? In other words, it's the why question. Why the bill?
Representative Ward, thank you for the question. So what we're looking at in terms of the bill is really a narrow situation where the three criteria outlined are being met. One, that there is a state of emergency proclaimed, that there are enacted crisis standards of care that have been approved by the Department of Health. And third, the providers that are engaged in those functions are directly doing so in relation to emergency orders. From the Queen's perspective, this bill is really to look at ensuring that when we are in a situation of scarce resources, so in the case of the pandemic, if there was a situation where we had to have one ventilator and had two patients that required the ventilator, that the providers directly involved in those decisions would be protected.
But are we not under the three conditions that you suggest right now? Aren't we under all those three conditions? In other words, isn't this bill?
No, no.
It's not affecting.
Right now, we are not under, we, we are not currently under those three conditions.
We're not under a pandemic?
So, so three conditions is that one, there has to be in the emergency proclamation that crisis standards of care have to be enacted and being utilized. And they, those are not being utilized at this time. But if the situation to rise when there are scarce resources and they would have to be carried out by the healthcare providers, then that would trigger the, the second criteria. And then the third criteria would be that the providers who would be protected would be the ones that would have to be making those decisions directly related to the emergency proclamation and be adhering to those standards.
Okay, let, let me ask you a street level question. That is a bit abstract for me. If someone has a negative reaction to a COVID-19 vaccination and they die, does this bill prevent them from any recourse? Yes or no?
I can't hear the question. If, if so, if the bill, so if someone had an adverse reaction to COVID, would?
COVID vaccination.
Oh.
The vaccine, the vaccination and they die, would this bill protect them from any recourse or liability?
This bill would not apply to that situation.
So your ventilator is the only example? I, I need another example that malpractice wouldn't, wouldn't resolve and why the bill is needed. Have you got another example other than the ventilator? You have a scarcity?
So another hypothetical example that I could give is, let's say there is a giant catastrophic event where airplanes fall out of the sky and we have multiple patients that need to be taken to the emergency room and seen all at once. And let's say we don't have enough emergency room doctors, the emergency room trauma providers to take care. And we have to bring in a, let's say a primary care provider to provide that emergent care to those people who need, who need the care. This bill would, in theory, if there was that event, it was proclaimed, there was a standard that was approved by the Department of Health. And those primary care providers who were responding to that in accordance with the emergency would be covered.
Wouldn't that be extremely rare for that to happen? What, why, why I'm saying, why I'm doing this is, you know, every American's day in court is a sacred right. And if this takes away that for something that abstract and that unlikely to happen, I just don't see the logic unless there's something more immediate that I can understand about the bill. Do you see the sacredness of the, the liability issue?
Absolutely. We 100% agree with you in terms of, you know, making sure that every person has their time in court. And this is for a very narrow set of circumstances. And I think that it was intended to be that way. And I think the pandemic is a perfect example in terms of a situation that we as healthcare providers did not anticipate, but raised the issue in terms of wanting to have that protection.
So you think you had a shortage of ventilators that wouldn't come after us because we didn't provide the money to do it? Or if you had a shortage of doctors, somebody would actually sue you for having a shortage of doctors? When we have already 500 to 700 doctors that we are short? Would that stand up in court?
I think, I think.
I think we have a slight disagreement on understanding what the bill is all about. Thank you, and I'll pass it on to someone else. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Representative McKelvey.
For Queens again, I guess. If they're there. Set up. So I mean, right now, if the law doesn't pass, isn't there a standard of care that's already used? The professional standard of care of a reasonable person in the same or similar situation with that professional background? In your case of your ventilators, wouldn't that be the standard of care that would get applied in the court? So to show that, you know, if the decision was made in the best medical interest of the patient, that that would be something to be considered rather than outright immunity? I mean, for these, this kind of special standard of care?
Thank you for the question, Representative. So our, our perspective is that this is beyond the, the normal standard of care that's currently under statute. This is, you know, very specific circumstances.
I'm talking about, but how so? I mean, it's a choice between which patient gets a ventilator in a plane, you know, as far as a plane crash goes, it's the same standard of medical treatment being used, right? For, I don't see why it would be require a new special standard of care.
Representative Kelby, if I may, one, I, one way to look at it is to say, you know, the current standard is doing the best for that patient individually. When we're talking about crisis standards of care, it's a shift from just focusing on that individual to what is the benefit for the larger community? Who would benefit the most? And I think that's where the, the big shift in decisions is in terms of your normal standards of care versus a crisis where you have to look at decisions not just based on the individual patient, but on what would be the, the best for the, for the larger population.
Mr. Chair, I, I have follow-up to this. I'm sorry, it looked like Rep. McKelvey was done, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. Actually, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate you letting me get that question.
Okay, Representative Lo Presti.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, what we're talking about here is just triage. Triage and mass casualty events. And the understanding of triage is as old as, as, as healing. I, I, I can't, I'm, I'm happy to agree with my colleague from Hawaii Kai and Maui on this. But this seems really unnecessary and strips people from their rights to a day in court. And I think juries are smart enough and judges are smart enough to recognize if you got a busload of school kids who show up and you only got four operating rooms and they all need operations, that's triage. And it's horrible situation, but no reasonable court or jury, I think, would hold a hospital accountable for, you know, not having that level of preparation. I think maybe this bill goes too far. But I, I mean, what am I missing with triage? I, I've studied medical ethics. I've, I've taught medical ethics. And I, I, and I think, I'm sure you have medical ethicists on your boards who talk about this as well. So we'll just give you one last chance to try to articulate why triage, why the basic expectation of triage treatment isn't enough.
Thank you for your comments, Representative Lo Presti. So I think the, the example that you gave is a good one, but it would not fall under the conditions of this bill that is being proposed, which is again to have a declaration or. which is, again, to have a declaration or proclamation of emergency. And then the next step would be, there had to be an approved crisis standard of care from the Department of Health. And then also the folks, the providers engaging and adhering to that crisis standard as it relates directly to the emergency that was proclaimed.
But doesn't that potentially set you guys up for actually more liability? Because if the crisis standard of care must be met through proclamation and all this sort of stuff, then all of a sudden you guys find yourself in a situation where you obviously have to act as if it's a crisis standard of care without an emergency declaration. You, you might be potentially setting yourself up for the situation you're trying to avoid. But we have a lot of bills and I think we've beaten a dead horse here. But thank you for your time and thank you, Chair.
Thank you, members. Any other questions? Hey, seeing none, we will move on to House Bill 1286 related to travel. We have Luke Myers, Aima.
Chair, good afternoon. My name is Luke Myers. I'm the administrator for the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Aima stands on our testimony offering comments on House Bill 1286. We are available for the discussions necessary. Thank you so much.
Okay. Testifiers, you, on House Bill 1286, you do have quite a few testimonies. As I'm going to ask that, as much as possible, you summarize your testimony and limit comments to two minutes. Next, HCH Health Resources Administration, Department of Health.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. I'm Sarah Kimball, Acting State Epidemiologist. The Department of Health has submitted comments and written testimony. We stand on the written testimony. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Felicia Crowden. Not present. Lauren Zerbo, Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Thank you, Chair. We'll stand on our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chip Olmo, Sheraton Kauai Resort.
Thank you, Chair. And committee members, my name is Chip Bay. I'm the general manager of the Sheraton Kauai. And I represent 300 plus families here at the hotel. The hotel is currently closed and has been since last year. And the current travel mandates that we have in place are not consistent on all islands, which forces Kauai into a situation where we're very uncompetitive with the other islands. Our travel industry has been impacted here on the island as well as all of the small businesses associated with travel. It is our wish that we get to a consistent program throughout the state such that we all can compete competitively for the business as we begin to reopen and create the economic volume that the tourism industry brought to our islands. I want to thank you for your time and if there are any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Rob Robinson, Springboard Hospitality.
Hello. Thank you, Chair and committee. My name is Rob Robinson. I'm the vice president and partner at Springboard Hospitality. We are a locally owned and operated hotel management company. I want to reiterate locally owned and operated. We currently manage nine hotels across the islands. They're primarily small hotels. I have submitted my testimony in strong support of the bill on behalf of Springboard Hospitality, but I wanted to just share a couple of quick anecdotes with you. Being locally owned and operated, I can tell you that the inconsistent travel rules are really having a dramatic impact on our businesses across the islands. Even assuming a modest recovery in tourism this year, we are currently forecasting net losses in the range of $3 million for our hotels here in the islands. And we do not see that improving until and unless there are some more consistency brought to the rules. I wanted to just reiterate, also want to point out that under those circumstances, we have no plans to, to rehire or bring back furloughed employees at this time. We certainly can't consider things like wage increases and other benefits until such time as tourism is jumpstarted to a much greater degree than in its current form. I want to just reiterate what Chip said. Kauai, we have a couple of properties there, has been severely impacted by their rules. Allowing the, the mayors to do their own thing has really been tragic for the travel industry. I had a colleague that traveled there last week. He went to one of these resort bubbles for three days so that he could then be released to take care of his business over there on the island. And he looked at me at the end of it and said, you know, I just had to spend $1,100 between two tests, a monitoring bracelet, three nights in a hotel. You know, also I could just come here and have a meeting. You know, I'm just simply not going to do this again. It's really left a bad taste in my mouth. Another individual came to Oahu last week, had business on Kauai, thought he was following the state, the county's rules to spend three days or 72 hours on Oahu before traveling to Kauai and get tested here. He did so, and then when he arrived at the Kauai airport, was told, oh, oh, no. You have actually, you had to spend 72 hours in Honolulu.
Mr. Robinson, that's the two minute warning. Could you please summarize and conclude your testimony? You'll need to unmute yourself.
So, I'm sorry. He, he, he got, he arrives on Kauai, thought he was following all the rules, found out, you know, that he had not followed the rules. The rules are not clear. I'll just kind of leave it there. I can't emphasize enough the need for a consistent statewide travel policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wendy Laros, Kona Kahala Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thanks. So aloha, my name is Wendy Laros. I'm the president and CEO of the Kona Kahala Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for this opportunity, Chair Nakashima and the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. We have nearly 500 members. Our chamber represents the business community in the Kona and Kahala districts on the west side of Hawaii Island, where tourism drives our local economy. Our community was especially hard hit in 2020 due to COVID-19 impacts that resulted in severe loss of business and mass layoffs. In October 2020, the Safe Travels Program was launched that allowed travelers to bypass the quarantine with a negative COVID-19 test result. This definitely helped our local businesses with the visitor arrivals and local businesses to finally get customers. Based on the state's continued low COVID-19 case counts, most agree that the Safe Travels Program is successful in providing the needed safety precautions while allowing our customers to return. Moreover, as COVID-19 vaccinations are distributed in 2021, we anticipate this additional safety measure will prompt more people to travel once again. As we navigate through this leg of our COVID-19 journey, we believe the Safe Travels Hawaii Program needs modifications to help streamline the process and improve the traveler experience. This includes standardizing the program statewide and stop the county by county mandates in regards to travel. This creates confusion for all travelers, whether visitors from outside of Hawaii or our residents traveling inter-island. And yes, we also have heard from many of our members those inconsistencies when they're doing their business travel. In addition, we found little flexibility in trying to accommodate visitors and returning residents who have done everything right, but for, but they run into problems with timely results or even technology problems with the app. The legislation addresses the issues set forth. And with the, with that, the Kona Kahala Chamber of Commerce supports initiatives that safely reopen our visitor industry and put our community back to work. We support the Safe Travels Hawaii Program and the modifications that are in House Bill 1286. Mahalo for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Mufi Hadamin, Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association.
Mahalo, Chair Nakashima, and to members of the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. It's my pleasure to offer a few remarks beyond my written testimony. We have long supported the Safe Travels Program. However, when there were tweaks being made, either at the county level, at the state level, we found ourselves in a difficult situation in trying to maintain that balance between adhering to strict health and standards protocols, which has always been our priority, and at the same time, ensuring that visitors could come here in a meaningful, hassle-free way. We're finding now that this bill provides an opportunity for us to do what administratively hasn't been done despite numerous appeals from ourselves and other organizations to see how we can find that proper balance. And we believe now more than ever, we have that balance between making sure that we adhere to strict health and safety protocols and at the same time, start opening the doors for economic recovery. From an economic recovery standpoint, that this has continued to be compelling. According to surveys, we found that more than 40% of businesses have admitted that they won't be able to reopen if tourism doesn't come back in a meaningful way. Another study revealed that by April, 50% of restaurants may be forced to close if they're not going to see again an increase in tourism and travel to the islands. On the other side of the health and safety ledger, it's good news. All our statistics are trending downward. We're moving in the right direction. The advent now of having the vaccine in our community is also giving us faith, hope and optimism that we'll be able to battle this vigilantly as we go forward. And we want to be clear, there's no 100% guarantee that anything that we do from a health perspective is going to make everything 100% and make us safe all the way through. You know, even a flu shot doesn't have 100% efficacy rate. But the best that we can do is make sure that government works with the private sector, works with the community to do all that we need to do, simple things like keeping the three Ws, maintaining that. But also in our businesses, in our workplaces, in our schools, that we do all we can to ensure that this is a healthy place to live, work and raise our families. And at the same time, open up the doors steadily, healthily for tourists to return here. We know that local residents trying to come back to Hawaii are also confused by the current rules that are there. So we come in, Speaker Seiki and the House COVID Select Committee, of which I've been an active member on, for endorsing this. And we ask the committee to please pass this out, go to the floor for a full vote. And then we can continue to press and advocate for Hawaii as we know it. One of the safest and best places to live, work, raise our families and an economy that will put people back to work. Mahalo, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Stephanie Donahoe, Kahala Coast Resort Association. No, I'm sorry. Tina Yamaki, Retail Merchants of Hawaii.
Not present.
Present. Dylan Ching, TS Restaurants.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima and committee members. I've submitted testimony, but appreciate a few minutes to speak in support of House Bill 1286. Thank you for your opportunity to speak on behalf of TS Restaurants. We operate eight restaurants in three of the four major islands. And we have, like so many others, been hit hard by this pandemic. By far, the largest strain on our business has been the restrictions on the businesses and the lack of travel. We understand the difficult decisions our elected officials make. Must balance to ensure we are safe and healthy in all, all aspects of our life. We made an early commitment to keep, one, to keep our employees and guests safe, to open in a way, in any way we can for our local community. And if those can be achieved, we start to get back to running a business that, that can survive in the long term. We believe that we met the first two and are working on the third. Many times during the last 10 months, we should have closed as the restrictions and lack of travel did not make sense. But we chose to stay open in hopes restrictions would be loosened and safe travel program would be put in place. When the program was implemented, we saw an immediate improvement in business. When changes were made to the program, we saw immediate erosion of, of our business. When someone asks me, what is one thing you need most? I say, we need consistent travel business. This is no disrespect to our local clientele, but the travel business helps us support the local business. I can live in the short term with altered hours, decreased capacity and all the other restrictions. If we have a consistent travel program, we can plan and operate at a sustainable level until a return to a more normal way of life is restored. We strongly and respectfully support House Bill 1286 in hopes that we can have a consistent travel program that allows visitors and kamaaina to travel safely and in turn, our economy can rebuild. Mahalo for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gary Hoosier, Pony Initiative.
Yes, hello, Chair. Chair Nakashima, members of the committee. My name is Gary Hoosier. I'm the executive director of the Pono Hawaii Initiative. But I've got my written testimony submitted. I'll, I'll say a few more words if I could. More importantly than my role with the Pono Hawaii Initiative is that I'm a 40-year resident of Kauai County. My children were born here, my grandchildren were born here. And I represented Kauai and Ni'ao in the state senate for eight years and the Kauai County Council for another eight years. And I'm strongly opposed to this measure. I have many friends who are in the visitor industry and who are unemployed. And there's lots of people suffering here. And I have to pay my bills on the first of the month like everybody else. I understand the economic pressure. But I also feel strongly that one size does not fit all. Each county is different. Each county has different demographics. Some counties have a higher percentage of older people, more vulnerable people. Some counties have less and some counties have more access to healthcare. And the state regulations should be a floor, not a ceiling. This measure takes away the rights of the county government, the mayor specifically, to protect its own citizens and have to defer to the majority, which is based in Honolulu. I believe that's fundamentally wrong. I believe to set a policy, a health policy like this into law is fundamentally wrong. The, the COVID situation changes daily sometimes. There's new variants. Whether 72 hours is good today, one test is good today, whether it's 48 hours or we need the flexibility to adapt to change in the future. It should be a floor, not a ceiling. Each county is different. I encourage everyone on the panel to vote no. And let's work together for policies to get our businesses back together. But passing a law and taking away the county's right to protect itself is not the way to go. Thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Steve Blansky, Management Information Consultant.
Okay, can you hear me okay, Chair?
I guess I can.
Yeah, they're sending me a thing to start my video here. Okay, well, I have about a minute and 55 seconds, so I'll, I'll be rather brief on paraphrasing my testimony. Basically, we're the only company in the state that provides a parliamentary professional presiding services to plan community associations and condominium associations throughout our state. We've been doing this since 1983. And this COVID-19 pandemic has adversely affected all of these association annual meetings. Many of them can't even conduct them electronically due to the current statutory requirements. This becomes somewhat problematic because there's a patchwork of rules between the counties. It's been inconsistent in the counties. Oahu, Hawaii and Kauai could meet. Maui could not. Legal county's council just said that Maui is now open. And of course, they, they're all meeting the CDC requirements. In most cases, these meetings are just meeting, you know, one to two hours. The problem is greater when you go to the neighbor islands from Oahu. Kauai hasn't had an absolute test. It was difficult to obtain results. And we frankly couldn't even serve any, anybody on that island. Currently, we got caught in an executive branch crossfire with a woman who works for me scheduled for three separate COVID tests to ensure one comes before she gets here on Thursday. Took one this morning, another one got canceled because it was 23 degrees below zero where she is. She's going to take an additional COVID test Friday, so we tried to get some resolution from the county. They have a recording that takes no messages. Then the email to the county says, go to the website. The website sends us to the state. The state sends us back to the county. This kind of inconsistency is, is not really good for our, for our economy. For some reason or other, this bill may have made a difference because I ran a difference because I arranged for my daughter to go, and it got done within two hours. She got permission. So you guys may have made a difference even before this hearing occurred today, but it does need to be resolved in a statewide matter. I think it's very important that you recognize we're dealing with, in about thirty weeks, we've had proclamations, extensions, supplements, and we've had emergency rules, and it's made it very difficult for people to even comply. You're dealing with something like thirty rules from each of these counties last year. The other thing is I hear the complaints about counties being different, you know, if Kailua. Okay, we'll do it. I'll summarize it. That, you know, this would not occur if the islands were attached to each other, and I think that this is a state law, and you guys are dealing with state law, and we're looking upon you to provide some leadership to make it consistent. Thank you very much, and I'm certainly available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Les Grant, OBD Coffee LLC.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, Chair Nakashima. I'm waiting, as I said, to testify on a couple other bills. I'll be pretty quick here. My comments, I'll stand on those and the written testimony that I submitted. We've been in business here for thirty years. I've been farming for two decades here on Kauai. We have numerous farms. We grow coffee, tobacco, chocolate, corn. So we're obviously deeply impacted by the tourism downturn here on Kauai, along with everybody else, with our value-added agricultural products. I think really what I want to say on this is that, you know, for years, we've been dealing with several other draconian measures here on the island, dealing with agricultural retail, which is still not allowed. A farmer is not allowed to sell a mango from his farm. You know, we dealt with a denial on our distillery permit where we wanted to distill our corn, and I believe that this Safe Travels Program, I appreciate the intent of this bill. I believe that the pandemic is probably going to be over by the time the governor signs this into law, but I certainly appreciate you folks bringing this measure, and I definitely support it. And I think Kauai really does, in a lot of cases, need to be brought in line with state law, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Williams, Highgate.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and members of the committee. Mahalo for the opportunity to submit testimony. On behalf of Highgate, I am also the current chair of the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association. Highgate manages seven hotels in Waikiki, which represents about thirty-two hundred rooms or thirteen percent of the inventory of hotel rooms in Waikiki. And during a normal business environment, pre-COVID, we typically maintain a staff of over a thousand employees. We have been advocating for the adoption of statewide travel rules as they pertain to the COVID-19 pandemic and Safe Travels Program. The lack of cohesion in the rules for travelers and returning residents to Hawaii has led to a significant confusion and difficulty for our visitors booking future stays, especially those visitors that wish to travel neighbor islands. This is further harming an industry that's already suffering an unprecedented economic downturn. At best, we hope to achieve twenty-five percent of two thousand and nineteen levels, and so we feel that a consistent, having consistent rules on the travel requirements is very important. As you may know, many returning residents, tourists, and business travelers have had trouble sourcing COVID-19 tests from a trusted partner and are not getting their test results back within the seventy-two-hour window. This issue has served problematic for our visitors and has slowed the rebuilding of the tourism industry since opening the state to trans-Pacific travel in October, on October fifteenth. At that time, we all looked forward to rebuilding our business. Hotels started to reopen, airlines added and restored flights, our travel partners had begun opening up sales to Hawaii, and our industry spent millions in adapting to the new norm by implementing health and safety standards that met all of the CDC guidelines and the state guidelines, only to be hit by new and confusing rules that varied from county to county. There have been many articles written on the convoluted protocols, and it is really serving as a deterrent to prospective visitors. It is because of this that Highgate strongly supports House Bill twelve eighty-six, and we strongly encourage all of you to vote yes for this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Josh Hargrove, Prince Waikiki. Rick Giggard, Hawaii Waikiki Improvement Association.
Thank you, Chair. Trying to see if I can start my video there, too. Thank you very much. I appreciate your hearing this bill, and I don't want to simply reiterate what you've heard in previous testimony. You have our written testimony. We believe that it's very important that we have a consistent statewide policy. Waikiki, of course, is almost half of the total visitor industry in the state, and we are still in an unprecedented slump due to the pandemic requirements, and obviously, it's something we're all in together to defeat this pandemic and move past it. I think the passage of this bill would give us a consistent statewide policy that would enable us to move forward. So I'll conclude there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Mira Kohler, RBOAA. Katie Britzman, Grand Hyatt Kauai.
Aloha, Chair and members of the committee. In addition to my written comments, I'd just like to testify on behalf of the Grand Hyatt Kauai that we strongly support, House Bill twelve eighty-six. We feel with the ongoing vaccination effort that now is the time to come together with a consistent Safe Travels Program that serves all of the islands. Grand Hyatt Kauai is the largest employer, the private employer on the island. We serve eight hundred and fifty amazing employees and their families. We've been closed since March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. We're nearing a year. Insurance for these associates is in question from month to month. Unemployment is running out. We are hypercommitted to reopening the resort. Our partners that book travel overwhelmingly tell us that consistency in the travel rules is the key to recovery, and we know that to be true. We ask for your support of this bill, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. James Raymond.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Madayoshi, and committee members. My name is James Raymond. Until January of last year, I served as a deputy attorney general, but I'm now retired and speak only as a concerned citizen. This bill's overall effect is to remove decision-making authority for pandemic travel protocols from the governor and place it in a relatively static form in HB twelve eighty-six. This would preclude changing travel protocols quickly should pandemic conditions warrant, but the power to act quickly is the exact reason the legislature placed those powers in the hands of the governor in the first place. The bill's drafters appeared confident that the ability to act quickly is preserved under the bill. I disagree. The Purpose Section added in HG one, Section One, states in part, "The purpose of this act is to create a statewide approach to the Safe Travels Program while still allowing the Department of Health to take necessary action to protect public health." The bill's drafters appear to believe that the ability, quote, "the ability to take necessary action to protect public health," end quote, is maintained by the insertion of Section two C, which states in part, "In addition to the exemptions provided for in the subsection B, the incident commander shall establish conditions under which persons may be deemed automatically exempt. However, this provision only allows the incident commander to make the rules more lax by allowing for additional exemptions. It does not allow for tightening the travel restrictions for the state or an island should conditions change suddenly. The only way that will happen is for the legislature to meet in regular or special session and amend the law." Thank you for your consideration. I remain available for the balance of the hearing or thereafter as needed for questions or discussion with the committee. Thank you.
Plakorakis. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, that was close. Thanks for taking the time, and thanks for all you're doing for all of us. I live here in Maui, longtime Hawaii resident, Oahu for many years, and have five operations here in Maui Restaurants, and I think I'm in very much support of this bill. I think there's never going to be the perfect time. There's always going to be issues one way or another, but it's not just about tourism. It's about our kekis. It's about our lifestyle. It's about us being able to function in a positive way. And I think that having four operations open in a limited way, you get the feel of the taste and the feel and the enthusiasm. And you hear about people not wanting to work. Well, I see people that can't wait to work and can't wait to be part of that positivity that goes to the kapuna and goes to the keki and get involved in sports, all these different things. So I know that, I think people are getting a bad rap that it's all about tourism. Well, it isn't. I have restaurants, but I don't really care about that. It's about the community, and I think it's time. And like I said, I don't think there's ever going to be a perfect time, but I think now is when we got to make it as easy as possible for people, whether it be island residents or people coming from the mainland, to be able to come in a seamless way. And I think it's very confusing, and it has been all this time. And the way we've tiptoed into things, I think we've done it right. We've done it with the right intentions, and many of us that have operations have gone by the book, done it right, and actually are proud to do it right. And our employees are proud to be organized and sanitized and less tables and less hours and closing at certain times and all these restrictions. No problem. We're willing, ready, and able to do what is right, but I think now it is right for us to make it easy for people to come and enjoy this beautiful place we call home, and for us that live here to be able to enjoy our homes. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Lee Ebsen.
Yeah. Aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I'm Professor Lee Altenberg with the Graduate Faculty in Ecology, Evolution, and Conservation Biology at UH Manoa. I'm testifying as an individual, and I have additional comments in addition to my written testimony. So I'm a mathematical population biologist. My expertise is in the mathematics of exponential growth. So testimony on the bill so far has been about how the pandemic has been, not how it is going to be. The arrival of the super-spreading variants changes everything. People need to realize this. Even with the rollout of the vaccine, the new variants could potentially grow so fast that by May, we are getting hundreds of cases of the B-117 variant per day, and the government has to be able to retain its ability to respond to changes in the pandemic. So most of the discussion of the bill has been, should Kauai be forced to have the Safe Travels Program? But what the bill actually does is it takes away the governor's power over quarantine. So the preamble of the bill says it still allows the Department of Health to take necessary actions to protect public health as supported by risk-based and scientific approaches to contagion mitigation. I support that text very strongly, but what it actually says contradicts this. It says this act shall take precedence over all conflicting statutes concerning the subject matter, and shall preempt all contrary laws, ordinances, rules, orders, or proclamations adopted by the state, a county, or any department or agency thereof. So the only role it gives the Department of Health is to advise the incident commander on additional automatic exemptions from quarantine. It preamps the governor from acting on the latest science-based policy advice from the Department of Health. Now, with the detection of community transmission of the super-spreading UK variant in Hawaii, the question we should be asking is, should anybody be forced to have the Safe Travels Program? So a science-based response to the discovery of the UK variant requires the following. First, an acknowledgement that travelers infected with the UK variant penetrated the Safe Travels Program and undetected and infected residents of Hawaii. An assessment of the consequences of this penetration, what will happen to the epidemic in Hawaii due to the estimated fifty percent greater reproduction of the UK variant. So based on mathematical models of what the UK variant can do, we could be potentially getting hundreds of cases by summertime, and the state needs to be examining such models and explaining to the public what the implications are. With your testimony. So I believe that if strong directions are taken immediately, we still have the possibility of ridding Hawaii of this variant, and that would prevent us from getting a whole new epidemic in the spring, even with all of our vaccinations. So the state needs to realize it has a choice it can make between letting the variants roll over us in Hawaii or keeping the variants out until we are vaccinated. If no action is taken, the choice is made by default. It is this choice that we need to be discussing. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Johan Yukimura.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Madayoshi, and committee members. I speak as a lifelong resident of Kauai, former mayor, twenty-two years on the county council, but right now I'm just speaking as a full-time citizen. I want to begin by acknowledging the concerns of those who support the bill, the economic hardship that our families, our businesses, and our hotels are going through. That has been the top of our concern on Kauai, where we have been supporting a truly safe program for bringing visitors in because we recognize that without it, we cannot truly begin economic recovery. However, the Safe Travels Plan that the state has instituted is not safe, and, you know, we want this COVID thing to end, but how to end it is really key. And as Mr. Altenberg just reported, the how must be done so carefully or it could backfire. And yesterday, there was an article in USA Today where experts are predicting a fourth wave if the US fails to contain the variants. The way to contain the variant is make sure that it doesn't come in in great numbers into our community. I beg the committee to sort out the testimony of those supporting it. They have a lot of complaints about how the Safe Travels Program isn't working and how the stop-and-go process, the changing regulations, the difficulty of getting tests done, but that is not Kauai's fault. All we're asking to do is to have a safe program, and the Safe Travels Program has been proven to us by our experience with it, where after a month of the Safe Travels Program, excuse me, the Unsafe Travels Program, the number of cases that Kauai had accumulated for the first seven months was doubled. Plus, it violates CDC regulations, and it is not science-based. The only reason I've heard for, that relates to Kauai, is that potential visitors are confused when there are different rules. This is a communication problem, not a policy problem, and if you approve this bill based on visitor confusion, it will just reinforce the widely-held perception identified in a recent Omnitrap poll that Hawaii's been being run for tourists at the expense of local people. at the expense of local people. Mayor Kauakami's creative and courageous efforts, I will thank you, have brought Kauai to the point. Only four new cases in the last 14 days, three of them were visitors, where the non-tourism economy has been coming back, and face-to-face school and sports are starting again, residents are getting haircuts and nails done, and the economy is coming back. But if the coronavirus comes back again, like it did when the state's program was in place, it will set us back. And Representative Tokioka announced last night on the Mel and Charlie Show that the mayor and others are working on a program to make it easier for visitors to come in with more rapid testing. But give Kauai a chance to do this, and please do not force us to resort to an unsafe program that is going to make disease, potential death, and economic recession more likely for Kauai. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Simeon Miranda? Not present. Okay, members, that's all the testimony that we have on this measure. Any questions? Representative Ward.
Mr. Heneman, if he's still there.
I'm here.
Mufi, thank you for all that you do and how I know passionately you are promoting tourism. It's not just a home rule issue. It's, let's look at the science. Look at Kauai's number. If we look at what they're doing and how that shows the efficacy of the program, and this is where you're probably going to push back on, what if the rest of the state adopted what Kauai was doing? What kind of a road would we be on? Or is that too impractical? In other words, if we assume what they're doing is successful, more successful than we are as a state, why don't we follow them? And what's the downside if we did?
You know, I publicly lauded Mayor Kauakami's early decision when he went early and he went hard when we were first confronted with the pandemic back in 2020. But Gene, you know as well as I do, circumstances change. And my testimony today, and it will continue to be, that we need to strike that proper balance between maintaining strict protocols and health standards. Hotel industry, for example, is the first industry in the state that basically went to all the hotels and said, we need to put forward health and safety protocols because we wanted to show we were serious about visitors coming here, but also taking care of our workers. And in fact, it was approved by the Department of Health. So our feeling is at this point that it's not just about airlines bringing passengers here or hotels having lodging accommodations for travelers to come here. But the statistics are overwhelming that we need to do something about putting people back to work. Small businesses that are hurting, restaurants, retail operations, that's what we're seeing across the board. And like it or loathe it, tourism is the only industry that we have right now that can put people back to work in the short term. And that's where we are right now. The statistics are trending the right way, Gene. Naturally, they're trending the right way. Yes, there's this variant out there. Yes, we're concerned that there may be something else that will create a surge and the like. But as I said earlier, there's no guarantee in life on anything. And right now, it just continues to pain us that we cannot have another alternative sector for jobs for our families. Because what's going to happen is that the pressure is going to continue to be on lawmakers like yourself to seek handouts from Washington DC, federal assistance from Washington DC, even go down the path of raising taxes to be able to take care of all of our ohana. So this is where I'm coming from. I don't begrudge Mayor Kauakami or any mayor on their strict insistence on health and safety protocols, yes. But I just think right now, we just need to shift and strike a better balance between bringing this economy back, which is very dependent on tourism, and putting people back to work and giving them hope and optimism in 2021. 2020 was a dreadful year all the way around. And as I pointed out in a study that I quoted from today, UH Center Public Policy Center, you know, over 50% of restaurants are going to close in April if travel doesn't resume in some normal way. And that's a month and a half away.
Mayor Heneman, I think, and I appreciate everything you're saying, if we don't get the economy going, all this stuff is for naught. Of course, at the same time, we don't want to have people dropping and dying on us. This is a real test that we were in the legislature to make the life and the livelihood balance. But I think when we look at this bill, it's assuming that everything that we're doing in the safe travels program is correct. Having brought my daughter here for Christmas vacation, having gone to a conference in January, the biggest frontal frustration is getting the test and getting it in a timely manner with a quote "approved" partner that is just mind-boggling. I mean, I'm in the legislature, and I had a timeline out, the 72 hours, was it before you get on the plane or after you get the test? And back and forth, I talked to Lieutenant Governor's Office. That is the first big barrier to come to Hawaii. I know there's been editorials about Kauai makes you a little bit more difficult, you got to go into a bubble, and you got three days to do what you're going to do, and then you can get out of jail or you can get out of the bubble. But Mufi, I think we're underestimating what, again, this is Representative McDermott and I, we should have COVID-free flights coming here. We should have COVID-free hotels. We should be doing a much more strict thing like Kauai is doing. So when people come, they're not doing a gamble, they're not risking because they'll know that they're safe. And what Kauai, and this is Mayor Yukimura, colleague, has said that...
Mr. Ward, is there a question?
My two minutes is up. She has said that there's too many people who are traveling into Kauai and bringing the problem. So having said that, I guess there's got to be a better way than the way we are doing it right now. Thank you, Chair, for that solo quip.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I can just take one minute. Gene, that's what this bill addresses. We've been looking for administrative changes in the 72-hour pre-test, where if you come here, you follow the safe travel program, you test 72 hours, and through no fault of your own, you arrive and your tests haven't been uploaded. I continue to get stories of a family that would come here, one person, one person in that family that does not have their results uploaded. Therefore, the whole family has to quarantine or during the course of a few hours, the test results are revealed that that person is negative. Guess what? They have no other recourse other than to be quarantined for the full 10 days or go back, get tested again, and then return. Fortunately, in this one instance, this family had the means by which to do that. But how many times are we going to provide for those situations? So I think this bill does provide that and say, hopefully, I was hoping that administratively, some of these things could have been addressed, but it's not. And that's what you have, the legislative branch.
Mufi, why don't we let Kauai die on the vine? If that's what they want to do, which so far they've wanted to be that way?
Because, Gene, you're only hearing from one side of Kauai. We hear from many sectors. The Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We hear from the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association Kauai chapters. We hear from many small businesses that want to have a healthy balance. They want to keep Kauai special. No question. Every island wants to be special. But there's got to be a reopening of safe travel to Hawaii that will allow people to go back to work that want to work. Other than that, businesses are going to continue to have a hard time. They're going to have to continue to rely on government to make up of what they can't provide for their families.
Thank you, Mufi. Are you in the neighbor islands on Kauai? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Representative McElvee.
Yeah, I think this would, I don't know who directed that. I guess I will just take a stab. Joanne, you still there?
I am.
Yes, okay. You read the bill, you look at, I caught this a little bit earlier in the life of this, on page 3, line 20, it says, notwithstanding Chapter 127A, which is the emergency proclamation chapter, didn't the mayor of Kauai enact the travel bubble and the other additional precautions and everything under 127A, the governor's emergency proclamation?
Yes. I believe that's true.
So if that were the case, then couldn't the mayor continue to be able to do these things, even if this becomes law?
I believe the bill says, notwithstanding, oh, sorry, Representative.
Go ahead.
I believe the bill says in the beginning, notwithstanding any other laws, including the laws that govern the emergency management process, that Bill 1286 will supersede all of that.
Well, no. See, it says, notwithstanding 127A. So the proclamations that were made were made under that, under which the mayors have exercised these different types of programs. So I guess with that in there, would that allow the travel bubbles legally to still be able to exist, even if it becomes law?
It might be better for you to get a legal opinion from the Attorney General, but I'm, my understanding is that this bill would usurp any county power or anything allowed under the governor's proclamations if there's an inconsistency or a contradiction. The Bill 1286 would prevail, is my read of it. The thing is that, you know, on Kauai, our goal is to get the economy back as fast as possible. And I guess we're following Paul Brubaker's opinion that the virus is, the pandemic is the economy, and until you get rid of the pandemic, you won't get economic recovery. And I think the testimony from the visitor industry is showing that even with the safe travels program, the state's program, they're not getting the kind of occupancies that they need to be really productive and profitable. So I think we should follow the New Zealand and the Taiwan model, where, you know, in New Zealand, they're having stadium events, and the economy is booming, as in Taiwan, because they have gotten the virus under control. And Kauai is right on the verge of it right now, of being able to go back into the economy. I mean, the restaurants are operating at full capacity, the ones that are open, and that's because it's safe on Kauai. If it starts getting, if the virus starts coming back, okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, members, any further questions? Representative Tokioka.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Joanne?
Yes, hi.
I want to just, first of all, thank you for your hard work, you and your team. You know, you've gone above and beyond as a private citizen to educate yourself, to educate decision-makers, lawmakers, the mayor, myself, Representative Nakamura Morikawa and Senate President Koichi. So thank you very, very much for that. As you mentioned, you know, Kauai is open. So we talk about, you know, Mayor Kauakami shutting down the island. And shutting it down, for what purpose? To keep the residents on Kauai safe. And it's proven to be beneficial, Joanne. So I think what you have done, and what we're trying to do, is to, you're trying to focus on a solution to open Kauai safely. Is that correct, Joanne?
That has been our intent from the start. And we did a report on, a science-based report on that, which I have linked in my electronic testimony to all of you.
Yeah, so it's not just about, I mean, I know there's a lot of angst at this bill and concern with this bill, but it's to find a solution to open the island, not to criticize this bill. And, you know, for my friends in the hotel industry and your friends, Joanne, Katie and Dan King and Mufi Heneman, you know, they know I come from the industry. And it's not about, you know, punishing the industry. I think it's about opening up the economy safely. And to that end, we looked at what is the way to do that. And, you know, Joanne, to me, that way is the cost of the test. Because if the cost of the test were down to, you know, an affordable amount and not $125 a test, do you think more visitors would come to Kauai and they would test what, they would get their negative test prior to coming and then be able to afford, or even if the hotels had put it into their room rate? And I know some of the hotels have talked about that. I know Chip Bayhoop, I talked to him two or three weeks ago about that. He said, Jimmy, I'll put it in the rate. I'll put it in the room rate. If you guys can get a cheap test. So I think, aren't, isn't your group trying to find that company or companies that can help us do that?
Yes, we are. And I think we all agree that lowering the cost of the test will be a big part of lowering the obstacle to a truly safe way of bringing visitors in. There still needs to be a quarantine time, but that's the genius of Mayor Kauakami's proposal, that there is this resort bubble, so they don't have to be in their room, but they still have to be restricted from going out into the island until they can be shown from a science basis to be safe. So yes, a cheap, user-friendly test and process is what we've been looking for and trying to develop on Kauai.
And, you know, thank you for that, Joanne. I think I would just add, because I just found this out today, that in a meeting with Mayor Kauakami and Senate President Koichi, that the county is going to be using some of their tests to test people that are in the bubble. So lucky those guys who are going to be allowed to use a county test to get out of the bubble where they don't have to pay the $200 because the county has additional tests. So, you know, to some of the people who were talking about, you know, how much it costs, yes, it was very expensive. But I know Mayor Kauakami is, the people that are in the bubble now are not going to have to pay for those tests. So once again, thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this bill and hopefully come up with a solution that's not anti-this bill, but opening up the state and certainly opening up Kauai safely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Members, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to House Bill 895 relating to credit for time of detention prior to sentence. Landon Murata, Attorney General.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and members of the committee. Landon Murata, on behalf of the Department of the Attorney General. First, I'd like to thank you for sending this matter for hearing. The department is in strong support of this bill. We believe that, and we submitted written testimony, so I'll summarize. We believe that the amendments to this bill will further the original intent of the legislature when it first passed subsection 3 back in 2012, and as it had been applied all the way through 2020, when the Abe High decision came down. With the amendments that are in this bill, the original intent of the legislature should be, the court should be able to revert to applying the law as originally intended. I thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Max Otani, Public Safety. That's all the testimony we have on this particular measure. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to House Bill 722 relating to human trafficking. We have Jasmine Ma Mukai, Judiciary.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jasmine Ma Mukai from the Children's Justice Center. So the judiciary stands in strong support, has submitted written testimony for this House bill related to human trafficking. We do have amendments that we've submitted.
Why didn't I get them? Because they didn't bubble? I should file, I should...
Okay, please continue.
We have submitted amendments and encouraged the committee to restore the statewide coordinator position, which does not entail any funding. which does not entail any funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Department of Human Services.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Joseph Campos, Deputy Director of Department of Human Services. We stand on our written testimony, offering comments and deferring to the Department of the Attorney General. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Fashad Talebi, Attorney General.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima and Members of the Committee, Deputy Attorney General Fashad Talebi. I'm also in the new role as the State Human Trafficking Coordinator. We, similar to the judiciary, we support this bill, but are respectfully asking the committee to amend the reporting requirement back to the original bill. We'd also prefer to have the coordinator position codified as well. But in regards to the reporting requirement, the intent was to provide initial assessment reports to the legislature over the next two years. The first one specific to commercial sexual exploitation of children. And then 2023 session would be on human trafficking more broadly. And after that, then allow the department to provide updates as necessary. So we appreciate your consideration and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Philip Johnson, Honolulu Police Department.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Kyle Nomosaki with the Honolulu Police Department Narcotics Vice Division. And the department stands by our testimony in support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, that's the testimony we have scheduled for this particular measure. Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to House Bill 1311 relating to affordable housing. First up, Janice Takahashi, Oi Housing Finance and Development Corp.
Hi, Chair. I'm Janice Takahashi, HHFDC. Thank you for the opportunity to provide supporting testimony on House Bill 1311. We want to point out that we particularly support section two of the bill, which deletes the completion date for the construction of the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan Downer, GLNR.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Alan Downer, Administrator of the State Historic Preservation Division. The department stands on its written testimony opposing the portion of this measure which would comply with Chapter 6. Stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you. Kamaka Ferreira, Office of Foreign Affairs.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. Kamaka Ferreira, the Lead Compliance Specialist with the Office of Foreign Affairs, providing administrative testimony. We stand on our testimony and opposition of this measure. And I would like to highlight that SHPD's authority to request a renewed archaeological inventory survey after decades have elapsed shouldn't be allowed in this particular case. And we've proposed that section three be deleted. And I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, that's all the testimony we have scheduled for this particular measure. Any questions? Representative Nakamura.
Hi, I have a question for Mr. Downer from SHPD.
Aloha, Representative.
Yes, my question is, if the exemption language is taken out and that we make sure that HHFDC complies with Chapter 6E Hawaii Revice Statutes as funding is appropriated for each portion of the project, would that be, would that be okay with you?
Yes, we've, we've actually worked out, you know, we've, we've actually told that to HHFDC. And we've had repeated meetings about this very, very measure, this very situation. So yes, we would, we would have no problem with that.
Thank you very much.
Members, any other questions? All right, thank you. Move on to House Bill 345 relating to assisted community treatment. James Tabe, Office of the Public Defender.
Good afternoon, Chair. This is James Tabe at the Public Defender's Office. We, before we stand on our, our testimony, just commenting on the bill, I do want to add one more item to my testimony. When, when IHS or the Institute of Human Services files a petition, an act petition, IHS is represented by an attorney. When a private party just files a petition, that private party is at a serious disadvantage when our office is involved. First, hiring attorneys is very expensive. So the, no, there's not that many cases where private parties filed these act petitions against a family member. Usually it's a family member. When they do, they don't have an attorney because it's just too expensive. So what we have a situation is the private person going to court against an attorney from my office who is well-versed and well-skilled in the courtroom procedure as well as the rules of evidence. If it even gets to hearing because of the difficulty that the private party has. We do try to help them in that part of the procedure, you know, explain to them. But when it goes to the hearing, that private party is unable to introduce any evidence at the hearing because they just don't know the rules of evidence, how to authenticate, how to lay proper foundation. And at that point, the petition fails. So I know this law here, it focuses a lot on the homeless and, and when IHS helps or tries to help. But this law also pertains to just, just regular folks in a community. And just to just let you know, because our office is involved, the, the folks, the regular folks just don't have, they're just at a serious disadvantage. Otherwise, we'll stand on our comments in our written testimony. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Behavioral Health Administration, Department of Health.
Yes, good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and Members of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. My name is Michael Champion, the Medical Director for the Adult Mental Health Division. The department stands on its testimony in support of this measure. And I'll be available to answer any questions that, that you may have about the measure. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, that's all the testimony we have scheduled to appear before us for this measure. Are there any questions?
Excuse me.
Connie Mitchell.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Connie Mitchell, Executive Director for IHS Institute for Human Services. And we stand in strong support of House Bill 245 as it was written. I understand that there were edits made after the last hearing before the Health and Human Services and Homeless Committee. We really would like to ask that you reinstate the language that was taken out, that removes the participation of the public defender in this process. We have been working for well over a year trying to petition for assisted community treatment for a number of people. The time that it takes to be able to successfully do this is hindered by the process. We, we are thankful that the committee is willing to look at appointing the guardian ad litem. But I believe the Attorney General's Office has indicated that, that the PD should not be removed because they need someone to represent them. But in fact, if the guardian ad litem is appointed and is appointed to represent their best interests, then you do have somebody who is representing that person. We would also kind of share that I think this is a family court kind of process. So, you know, the, the public defenders usually are defending somebody who is in criminal court. But I think having the, the guardian ad litem be that person that represents the person sufficient. Other thing is that the judiciary's objection on, about the jails being appointed based on cost is probably not going to make much difference if they are appointed upon petition. Because every one of the, the cases where we have come to court, the judge has appointed a jail. Just takes a little bit longer because we have to go to court first instead of before we are there. We just want to make the process as quick as possible so that we can get treatment for some of these people who are very, very vulnerable. And finally, the other argument about the judiciary, that the judiciary has about not engaging the subject. We in fact, you know, do serve the person. We give the opportunity for that person to come, but they're usually so mentally ill that they do not participate in the process. So I think that we try to protect the person's, you know, rights and provide them to process. But it's just very difficult when the person has already lost their decisional capacity and they really can't participate very constructively in the process. So I just wanted to offer that. And finally, it was just that the time that it takes to actually do the process in court sometimes results in people actually dying before we even get to petition. Or, you know, in some cases, they have more tragic consequences. Like one of the, the subjects of the petition assaulted a police officer and then ended up being longer time. I think he's still in, in jail right now. But there are, you know, numerous different kinds of situations that could happen. Another woman was hit by a car. And so I really, as you can tell, I'm pretty passionate about this. But I just wanted to offer that, that if you could reinstate the language that takes the PD out, the public defender, you'd be very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, so that's all the testimony we have scheduled to appear before us on this particular measure. Are there any questions? Okay, still seeing on House Bill 273 relating to license renewals. Ed Sniffen, Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair. David Rodrus, Hawaii Department of Transportation. We stand in our testimony in support, offering comments. And Preston Cole is in the waiting room to answer the committee's questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, that's all the testimony we have on this measure. Any questions? Moving on to House Bill 1314 relating to taxation. Isaac Choi, Director, Department of Taxation.
Yes, Chair. Jonathan White, on behalf of the Department of Tax. The department submitted testimony, providing comments. And the department will stand on its written testimony. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tommy Amachika, Tax Foundation, Oi. Okay, members, that's all the testifiers we have scheduled for us on this particular measure. Any questions?
I have a question. Yes.
Representative Nakamura.
Yeah, I have a question for.
A prime example would be where Moi would have some concerns or some issues regarding patients at HMO that brought her attention and so she would follow.
I have a question for Department of Tax. I wanted to find out your, your concerns on this bill.
Yes, I guess several. The, I guess the number one is we felt like there's not a clear connection between the reduction in state revenues that would be inherent in the repeal and the tax credits for income tax, which is a state tax, and the increase in the real property tax. There is a, an increase, a surcharge to the transient accommodations tax, which is a county, which will go to the counties. There's also a repeal of the, the current county share of the transient accommodations tax, which would increase under the current transient accommodations tax state revenue. I think that's equivalent right now of 103 million. The income tax, personal income tax, I think right now is around 2 billion or something like that. It's not comparable to that. So that's the number, the number one issue. The other thing was just, it wasn't, it's, I think that the, the tax credits and the reduction in the income tax rates down to zero eventually are to, you know, offset the, the effect of the increased real property rates. But there's not a connection to the, each county increasing its real property rates. And so a county that didn't increase its real property rates, the citizens of that, residents of that county would nonetheless enjoy the reduced income tax amounts. So that even if there was a mechanism to share county real property revenues to offset the state income tax revenue, it might not match there because there's nothing requiring each county to do it in order for those residents to, to enjoy the tax credits and the reduced rates.
Do you feel that taking away the TAT as, is outlined in the bill would be incentive for the county to increase their real property taxes?
Well, I think that, I mean, that's a question for the counties overall. I think that now, like I said, there's 103 million split among the four, not equally, but, you know, based on essentially population size. So that's a lot of money. I think that, I don't know the number on, you know, property tax revenues now. I don't know much about that, the intake at all. You know, how the 103 million from the TAT would compare to current county. But I would look at that kind of stuff to try to determine that, but I can't. I mean, just in general, it seems like it would be, they would have to come up with that 103 million some kind of way. The real property tax is an obvious way. So I think, I think the answer to your question is, I think it's a question for the counties, but my answer would be yes.
And Chair, I have one more question for Department of Taxation. Do you feel that the idea is over time, the income tax, the state income tax would be reduced while the property tax would be increased? How do you see that playing out?
Well, that's another of the unknowns in the bill. The, the effectiveness of the tax credits is essentially, that's essentially a reduction in the income tax immediately. And then I believe the timing starts January 1st, 2022, for the income tax rates to reduce as well. So that, but that's laid out in the bill in detail, how that the income tax will climb down to zero. And the real property tax increase is laid out in detail as well in that it basically says to get the TAT surcharge, a county has to increase their real property tax. So I don't think that, it doesn't seem like that real property tax increase is necessarily going to be a, like a stepped up thing So I don't think that, it doesn't seem like that real property tax increase is necessarily going to be a, like a stepped up thing as the income taxes step down. So I can't, I can't connect all the dots in this bill, but it seems to me like the immediate effect would be a shortfall of 103 million among the four counties, which would lead to an immediate, they're speculating here, but lead to an immediate real property tax increase of some size, but would also lead this bill to an immediate system of tax credits and lower income tax rates.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Members, any further questions? Representative McKelvey.
Real quickly, tax before you run off. First of all, I like the state circuit breakers, especially given what's going on today economically. But one of the circuit breakers will be limited to people 65 years and older and older with a total earned income of less than $20,000. That's quite a low number, isn't it? I mean, probably wouldn't be too many people in their own homes that are earning less than $20,000, would there be? Or how big do you think that class of beneficiary would actually be?
Yeah, that number, the number stuck out as as pretty small. I think that the the intent was to capture not just the elderly, but the, you know, the lower income. I'm looking for that in the bill. I want to see exactly what the measure is. Yeah, total earned income. So that's, I guess another issue in the bill is the, you know, I was expecting to see Hawaii adjusted gross income or federal adjusted gross income, but earned income, we'd have to have a definition of that as well. Because that likely would exclude, you know, social security and stuff like that from just sort of my, you know, desktop definition of earned income. But that's a, that's a defined term in the Internal Revenue Code in different places. So that definition is unclear in here. But I think that your your question is, how big a group would it be? I think it would be a small group. But it would isolate retirees, basically less than 20,000 earned income, low income or retirees that also own property and therefore subject or exposed to the real property tax increase.
Some of my concern is you're taking the TAT away and ideas of giving them money back, trying to give it back to the residents. But it's such a small, it's such a low ceiling that it could leave a lot of them, like, gets out of it as far as.
For the circuit breaker credit, yes. The other credit's a little more general. And then the real, the 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 general income tax rate decrease is there for everyone as it climbs down. But yes, you're right, that the that one, that credit is definitely narrow.
Thank you very much. Members and Representative Ward.
Chair, I have a question regarding Mayor Kaukami's testimony. Is he or anyone representing his office there? Mayor Kaukami, if not, no problem. Thank you.
I love the mayor's.
You had very strong concerns. I wanted to sort of drill down into that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so for this question, House Bill 32 related to animal fur products. We have testimony from Catherine Alfuli Cologne, DCCA, expressing concerns that her department be, not be the one responsible for implementation. Next, House Bill 1122 related to the Hawaii Homes Commission. We have comments from Director Ayla and support Robin Bunani, who who are both not scheduled to be here.
Hello, Chair.
Yes.
William Ayla, Chair of the Department of Hawaiian Highlands. I may speak.
Sorry, Chair, I was told that you were not coming in. Hi.
Sorry, we we were able to finish the Hawaiian Homes Commission meeting today. So if you please, I'd like to go over some comments that we submitted. Okay, in section one of the bill, in amends, section 201 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act, with a definition of beneficiary consultation, the department already has administrative rules that defines beneficiary consultation and the process of beneficiary consultation with regards to section two of the bill and amend section 204 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act that prohibits DHHL from extending or leasing generally to non beneficiary for the occupancy of a tract of Hawaiian homelands. The amendments proposed are unnecessary and they propose to elevate the interest of lessees and homestead associations associated with lessees over those of waitlist waitlisters and waitlist beneficiary associations. So we don't believe that that is a fair amendment. With regards to section three of the bill, it seeks to prohibit the department from adding additional criteria to the lease with an applicant. These proposed amendments directly conflict with section 208 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and they may have an unintended consequence of preempting because of the reference to federal regulations, proposed federal regulations, the addition or the inclusion into existing leases of things like State Department of Health Clean Water Act implementations. An example would be recent State Department of Health directions to to not only our department, but other state departments to include aerobic systems, wastewater systems over potable water aquifers. And so that might be an unintended consequence that we want to make sure that legislators are aware of. Section four of the bill amends section 213 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act to allocate interest or other earnings from the Hawaiian Home Loan Fund and the Hawaiian Home General Fund into their, into their respective funds. These proposed amendments are unnecessary since the Hawaiian Home Loan Fund is used primarily to pay the net proceeds when a lease is canceled or surrendered or when a leasie dies without leaving the qualified successor. So the the fund already does that. Section six of the bill seeks to amend section 216 to require the department to submit quarterly funds to the legislature. The department provides quarter, provides monthly reports to the commission. So anyone can go to our website and see what those monthly reports are. And then finally, regarding section seven of the bill, seeks to amend section 221 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission, authorizing DHHL to negotiate homestead association governed water agencies to maintain water systems. We already do that on the beginning and we already have agreements in place. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Your members, are any questions?
Chair, I just wanted to, Kat Awakuni Cologne from DCCA, I just wanted to let you know that I am available if you or your committee members have questions about HB 32. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me finish up House Bill 1122. Members, any questions for Chair Ayla? If not.
Excuse me, Chair. Wasn't there a testimony submitted by Robin Danner?
Yes, there was.
She's not a.
She's not, she's not scheduled to be here. Then going back to House Bill 32, animal fur products. Director Cologne.
Thank you, Chair. Again, as you stated, we we do appreciate the intent of the measure, do have concerns which we offer. We don't have any opposition to the concept. It's really the fact that this particular measure seeks to place the enforcement duties with DCCA. So apart from, you know, not really aligning with our mission, it's also a challenge given our special funded nature of our department. And again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Members, any questions?
Apologies, Chair. Pardon my interruption. This is Lindsay Gerhyle from the Humane Society of the United States. My colleague and I were told we could testify and support. Would that be okay?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Lindsay Gerhyle. I am the Hawaii State Director for the Humane Society of the United States. I would like to reinforce our strong support for House Bill 32. As the Hawaii State Director, it is my honor to work with Hawaii legislators and the community to find ways to fight against animal cruelty here and elsewhere. Unfortunately, there is simply no way to humanely produce fur. Every year, over 100 million animals, including chinchillas, foxes, mink, coyotes, and raccoon dogs are killed for their fur. 85% of all fur comes from fur factory farms where undomesticated animals spend their entire lives in cramped cages, deprived of the ability to engage in natural behaviors. Living in these conditions causes enormous stress, which can lead to self mutilation and other issues. These animals are then killed by neck breaking, crude gassing, or anal electrocution. Fur producers have even been documented skinning animals alive. In the wild, these animals are caught in cruel lake hold traps where they often languish for days without food or water. The concern for animal welfare continues to grow in Hawaii and across the state and consumers are increasingly wanting products that do not involve animal cruelty. If we have time, my colleague PJ Smith can talk more about numerous brands that are also following suit. Hawaii now has the chance to take an affirmative stand against these cruel practices that are inherent in the fur industry as well as COVID-19 related public health risks that my colleague, again, PJ Smith, can talk to more in detail. But for these reasons, we respectfully ask that the members of this committee supports the passage of HB 32. Thank you and pardon the interruption again.
Thank you very much. Your members, any questions?
This is PJ Smith from the Humane Society. If you give me a second, I would love to add to my colleague's testimony. Is that all right, Chair?
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name's PJ Smith. I'm the Director of Fashion Policy for the Humane Society of the United States. For the, over a decade, I've worked with dozens of the top apparel companies, including Nordstrom, Bloomingdale's, Gucci, and Prada to create fur free policies that are good for animals and the environment. Consumers understand there's no way to humanely source fur and companies are responding by ending fur sales. The last year shined a new light on the fur trade and its risk to public health. Fur-farmed mink are the only species known to transmit the coronavirus to humans. Last year, outbreaks occurred on over 400 fur farms in 11 countries, including right here in the United States, in Oregon, Utah, Wisconsin, and Michigan. The virus is mutating on these farms and the mink variant has now been found in humans around the globe and among wild mink in Utah and Oregon. Due to this risk, 20 million mink were killed. Sweden and Denmark have suspended production and France and the Netherlands announced the end of mink farming. And just today, the World Health Organization released a report saying that the overall risk of introduction and spread of SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, from the fur farming system to humans and susceptible wildlife population is considered high. Luckily, awareness and innovative alternatives like Stella McCartney's new biodegradable corn-based faux fur are just as warm and stylish and better for the environment. California banned fur sales in 2019 and this year Oregon, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New York, and Connecticut will be joining Hawaii by introducing fur sales bans of their own. Consumers care about animal welfare, the environment, and innovation more than ever. And with the passage of HB 32, Hawaii will solidify its position as the nation, one of the nation's most humane states and signal to the rest of the world that it would not contribute to this cruelty in public health. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, members, any questions? Representative McKelvey.
For Abacus PJ, I believe. Yeah, so I'm just looking at the testimony in DCCA and I apologize, it owns the bill in front of me. But it seek, the bill seeks to regulate the fur industry in Hawaii through DCCA. Or, I mean, I'm just confused as to why regulate it through DCCA, not just try to ban it outright like you alluded to in Oregon. That's all.
This is a question for me. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's for you. Yes.
Yes. So I mean, it's it's to ban the sale of fur products within the state. And so the enforcement as of now would fall on the DCCA.
Wouldn't it be better if it's a crime, I guess general crime would be AG's office, you know? I mean, like we've tried with some of the other ban bills that we've had, like Ivory and such.
Yeah, no, I think that's, we were looking at creating sort of a warning system so that if somebody violates this, the retailer violates this. And again, this is, this is of no cost to the state. And as far as enforcement, I mean, where we've seen other states like California enforce, it would, it's really just a public would alert somebody through sort of a hotline and then you would have submitted a warning and then it would have a sort of a ticket or a violation to that, which then the DCCA would be able to recoup those costs. So this is just primarily how it's been written in other states.
Kind of work out like that in Hawaii. So I maybe hopefully as the measure moves forward, because, you know, support it, you can look at perhaps the Ivory law and some of the other ones as far as enforcement. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any further questions? Not if Director Cologne is still on.
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, so my my colleague suggested Attorney General be put in charge. I was going to ask, put you on the spot and ask who you would tag.
Well, I think that is, you know, Representative McKelvey, as probably the former CBC Chair, understands our financing structure. It is, you know, so after hearing what Mr. Smith was describing, you know, we would have to have some sort of mechanism to be able to afford, you know, if it's even just that one enforcement officer. It, everything needs to be self-contained. And so the entire program needs to be able to pay for itself if it's at DCCA. So I think, you know, another entity, you know, if it's law enforcement, you know, might be able to go after this as a crime. I think that's a very elegant solution. And I think Rep. McKelvey is correct in pointing out that there are similar kinds of goods that we have as a state said, you know, we don't want to buy and sell in the state.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? If not, then we will move on to House Bill 1124 relating to the Hawaii Homes Commission Act. William Ayla, DHHL.
Thank you, Chair. The department submits comments on this bill regarding sections one and two of this bill, which proposed to amend sections 208, subsection six, and 209, subsection B, to require the Hawaiian Homes Commission to require appraisals that identify the leasehold market value in conformance to methods and standards applicable to other leasehold properties across the state. The the issue is that DHHL homestead leases are leasehold in a way that's different from leasehold out there in the, on the, on the market. So the term leasehold refers to the lessees' right to exclusive use and possession of the tract of DHHL land for a term of years. DHHL leaseholds can only be owned or controlled by qualified beneficiaries. Therefore, the market for DHHL leaseholds is limited by statute. This unique limitation affects the availability of private and federally insured financing for DHHL leaseholds and how DHHL property can be appraised via underwriting. There's also conflict with FHA insured mortgages, which require the appraisal to be done on replacement costs of the leasehold improvements, ascribing no value to the leasehold or the land. So requiring these, the change in the appraisal process makes it directly conflict with the private lenders via FHA-backed mortgages. Regarding Regarding the other, the additional unintended consequence is when a homesteader passes with no qualified successor. What happens is the department pays out the appraised value to the, known as net proceeds, to whoever that lessee deems to be their heir. By including the land in that process, the heir, and if they're not qualified to succeed, is a non-Hawaiian. So the heir benefits from the value of the land and the improvements on the land, which the original lessee never paid into. The department pays for those improvements. And so it would basically benefit some, someone who's non-Hawaiian at the expense of someone who's on the waitlist that will come in and have to purchase that at a higher rate, reflective of the value of land, which should not be included. Regarding Section 3 of this bill, it would amend Section 210 of the Hawaii Homes Commission Act to prohibit lessee cancellation based solely on loan delinquencies or default. This is, this is not a problem. I'm not sure why we're seeking to solve something that is not a problem. The commission already bends over backward, and I personally witnessed them continue contested case hearings for the delinquency cancellations for more than a year, giving the delinquent lessee many, many opportunities and many flexible ways of trying to come into compliance. So by restricting the commission to a small set of solutions, I think does a disservice to the flexibility that the commission really has statutory. Regarding subsection, regarding Section 4 of the measure, which would amend Section 216 of the Hawaii Homes Commission Act, permitting a second position on loans on homestead leases by approved lenders. There's a, there's a theme that goes through all of these amendments. And that theme is, we are recognizing lessies over the benefits to those who are on the waitlist. For example, by allowing second positions on loans, the department would have to put into reserves additional funds to cover the existing loans. And for example, we already have 4,700 loans totaling over $600 million that we're responsible for, making sure that they're covered. By allowing an additional second position to be taken out, actually does a disservice to the 28,000 folks who are still on the waitlist, waiting for their first loan, for their first position. So we would, we would oppose this amendment. It removes the flexibility with regards to the loan servicing guideline that would tie us to certain things. It removes the flexibility of the DHHL loan officers when it comes to working out creative measures to keep them in compliance. It would say you can only do this in terms of repairing the violation and the delinquency. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Members, that's the only testimony we have scheduled. Any questions? Chair, Representative Ward.
Mr. Ayala.
Yes.
Clearly, you have a big job with this small budget, but let me ask this question. The scariest resource we have in Hawaii, you have a lot of. You have, you have land, but yet the homesteaders get no value out of the land. The question is, why can't we be like Kamehameha Schools Bishop Estate? That says you've got a lease, and I think your leases are 99 years, that there's a position, which every other citizen has, to, if you will, have some value in. And I, and I hear your arguments about, well, why that wouldn't be fair to this or that, but just from a point of view of not being a second-class citizen, doesn't it make sense to allow homeownership to, to be the basic foundation of wealth in America? And Hawaiians are not being allowed that opportunity. Did you see?
Yes, I see what, I see what you're saying. However, you know, as someone who has a fiduciary duty to the trust, the pitting of one beneficiary class against another beneficiary class is something that is very difficult for us to do. And, you know, folks that have a first loan and have a house, pitting them against those who are waiting, and then forcing the department to put additional funds on the side that gets tied up, because it's just in case that there's an economic downturn like we have now, and these positions get called into play, actually prevents us from applying the limited additional funds that we have to allowing loans for folks who are on the waitlist to come off the waitlist. So, you know, it's great that you don't have to split the baby, but we have to.
Is that by law, you have to have those reserves for anybody who takes the loans out?
It is by agreement with the FHA and HUD.
So that ties your hands to a degree, which I guess in all things.
It makes for a tough fiduciary decision.
But when you mentioned it ties up your money, I mean, let us be very frank. The federal government, the state government has never funded you guys after 100 years, and you've got about 10,000 homes, 200,000 acres, and you've got 20,000 or more on the waitlist. So I hear when you say you don't want to have one group against the other, but my God, we've got to get on with it after 100 years. We haven't got this thing off into second gear yet. We're still in first gear, climbing up the mountain. Do you have any solution in that? In fact, the other day, when, when we had your group, it was another issue regarding leases, that we learned that you don't have your leases recorded at the Bureau of Conveyances. So that's more expense to you guys. Why don't you have it at the Bureau of Conveyances, so it's not on your dime?
The reason that we do our own recordation of leases is a requirement of the FHA loaning policies. And that is, you know, we, it's an additional burden on us. However, we wouldn't have this larger pool of money for our beneficiaries to borrow from had we not been, had HUD and FHA not been available to us. And with regards to the, the department getting additional sources of revenue, I mean, that is why we propose, you know, something as out of the box as gaming, because we know that you, as legislators, do not have the pocket, the pool of money that, to give us what we need in order to fulfill our mission. And I appreciate you trying all the time, Representative Ward.
One other question, Mr. Ayala. In the, the FHA requirement, is that by a unique administration of some president? Had it come under his administration and it stuck? Or does it vary, or has it always been there? Because I find that would be an unusual thing, which FHA for the Indian tribes on the mainland and other minority groups, they, why would they put that pressure on you to have all those funds in reserve? Which, when you don't even have many funds to even keep your lights on? I find it very, very strange. So was it, is it politically, under one administration, and not as a general rule of thumb?
My understanding is that has been constant through all the different administrations. And I, you know, as a lender, I think it's very prudent upon them to have a backstop, because, you know, you're loaning on leasehold land, and you're loaning to applicants who may not always have the best credit rating.
Sorry Chair, my last question. Is it the market forces in and of themselves now kind of doing what this bill wants to do? And that is let the equity build in a particular ownership of a house? Aren't there some houses that are being bought and sold by a number of Hawaiians? And it's not the quote "replacement value"? It's actually a market value, because it's a desirable place, and it's cheaper than the other markets. So isn't there a degree?
It should not be market value. If there are any loans that are appraised outside of the replacement value, the commission has instructed staff to go back and clarify to that institution that they are to use, they're to use the replacement value, because that's what we're held to.
Which ties your hands considerably. But Chair, I know this has gone on a little bit longer, but this is a very important issue, which we made a commitment to Hawaiian people. We just haven't fulfilled it. And thank you, Mr. Ayala, for all that you do. It's not an easy job. Hopefully, we can make some progress with some of these things. Thank you, and thank you Chair.
Very much. Members, any further questions? If not, we go to the last bill on the agenda. House Bill 1020, related adaptive natural resource management. Brian Nielsen, DLNR.
Aloha Chair, committee members. Thank you for hearing this bill today. The department stands on our written testimony in support, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none of you, recess for decision-making, recess. Recession. We're room 325, and we are in decision making. Members. First item is Hospital 1066 related to criminal history record checks. Chair notes that this is defect dated and suggest remove it as is. Any questions? If not, vice chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1066 HT1 as is. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Ichiyama?
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi?
Aye.
Representative LaPresti?
Aye.
Representative Lowen? Excused. Representative McKelvey?
Aye, aye.
Two ayes. Representative Nakamura?
Yes, aye.
Representative Takumi?
Aye.
Excused. Representative Todd?
Aye.
Representative Tokioke?
Aye.
Representative Ward?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. House Bill 2225 related to bullying. Chair's recommendation is to change this to a defective date, July 1, 2021, and move it forward. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 225 HT1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 288 related to transportation. Chair's recommendation is to defect date this July 1, 2021, and move it on. Questions, comments? Vice chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 288 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 337 related to constitutional amendments. Chair's recommendation is to defect date this July 1, 2021, and move it on to the next committee. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 337 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 61 related to non-general funds. Chair's recommendation is we defect date this to July 1, 2021, and move it on to the next committee. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 61 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. HB 320 related to stock preservation. Chair's recommendation is to move this as is. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 320 HT1 as is noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
HB 823, House Draft 1, related to public land liability. Chair's recommendation passes out as is. Members, any questions, comments? Vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 823 HT1 as is noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 446, House Draft 1, related to motor vehicles. Members, in the AG's testimony, they recommended removing Sections 4 and 5. They include scrap catalytic converters from the bill because licensed scrap dealers are not authorized to deal in used motor vehicle parts, which are in Chapter 289. I will note, however, that the catalytic converters have a value of the material that it's made up with, and so it has a scrap value other than being a catalytic converter. And so I do want to make that notation for the record, the committee's record, to kind of highlight the fact that the catalytic converter is not just the entity, but it also has intrinsic value because of the material it's made of. And also, I wanted to include the Schnitzer steel Hawaii amendments as they proposed in their testimony. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair question?
Yes.
I'm not sure how many places it says catalytic converter that you're taking out, but you're still maintaining that if you cut this, you're going to be penalized, right? Or you're taking catalytic converter out, we're saving it?
No. What I'm suggesting is that the AG suggested I take out a portion of the bill that dealt with vehicle parts and not included the part about the salvage people because a catalytic converter is a part and not salvage. But I'm suggesting that it does have an intrinsic salvage value because of the precious material in it. And so I wanted to highlight that for the record.
But I guess my point is if it passes, it sends a signal to those guys who are under cutting them away that they're not going to get away with it, given what we've now spotted in putting this bill. Does that still maintains that part of it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, members, any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair with amendments.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 446 HT1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
HB 1109 related to administrative rulemaking. Chair's recommendation passes out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 446 HT1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
HB 540 related to liability, vice chair.
HB 540, we're going to be amending this to add in an exception for willful misconduct, gross negligence, or recklessness. And we're also specifying that the healthcare provider must be engaged in emergent care functions that are directly related to the declared state of emergency or local state of emergency in order to further narrow this exception down to medical providers specifically addressing the state of emergency itself. These are Queen's amendments that I talked to them and modified.
Members, any questions or comments?
McKelvey's finger went up first.
I just appreciate the work the vice chair is doing on this measure. I think we agree on a lot of different things that are raised up. However, my concerns, there's still concerns with giving liability immunity, especially when you have so many other workers involved in pandemics who are probably worthy of this as well. So I'll be going with reservations, but thank you for the work that you guys are doing on the measure. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Members, any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair with amendments.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 446 HT1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
HB 540 related to liability, vice chair.
HB 540, we're going to be amending this to add in an exception for willful misconduct, gross negligence, or recklessness. And we're also specifying that the healthcare provider must be engaged in emergent care functions that are directly related to the declared state of emergency or local state of emergency in order to further narrow this exception down to medical providers specifically addressing the state of emergency itself. These are Queen's amendments that I talked to them and modified.
Members, any questions or comments?
McKelvey's finger went up first.
I just appreciate the work the vice chair is doing on this measure. I think we agree on a lot of different things that are raised up. However, my concerns, there's still concerns with giving liability immunity, especially when you have so many other workers involved in pandemics who are probably worthy of this as well. So I'll be going with reservations, but thank you for the work that you guys are doing on the measure. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Members, any other questions or comments? Representative Ward?
I would agree with that and say that every American deserves their day in court. And until this actually has an incident where they've tried to actually say that this is going to happen, I think it's a solution in search of a problem, which in the catastrophic events that they said about people falling out of the sky or ventilators running short, I just think it's an overreach into, they probably got really good lawyers who say, look, we want to isolate ourselves from any liability. And they are taking a lot of risks. I mean, and you know, to Queen's credit, they've spent probably millions and millions of dollars that they've lost in treating the homeless, particularly in their emergency room. So there are high moral ground, but on this one, I think they're a little bit more paranoid. For those reasons, still, reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, members. House Bill 1286 related to transportation. Chair's recommendation is to defect date this July 1, 2021, and move it forward. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 225 HT1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 288 related to transportation. Chair's recommendation is to defect date this July 1, 2021, and move it on. Questions, comments? Vice chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 288 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 337 related to constitutional amendments. Chair's recommendation is to defect date this July 1, 2021, and move it on to the next committee. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 337 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 61 related to non-general funds. Chair's recommendation is we defect date this to July 1, 2021, and move it on to the next committee. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 61 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 894 related to Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center fees. Chair's recommendation passes out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 894 as is noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. HB 320 related to stock preservation. Chair's recommendation is to move this as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 320 HT1 as is noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
HB 823, House Draft 1, related to public land liability. Chair's recommendation passes out as is. Members, any questions, comments? Vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 823 HT1 as is noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. House Bill 446, House Draft 1, related to motor vehicles. Members, in the AG's testimony, they recommended removing Sections 4 and 5. They include scrap catalytic converters from the bill because licensed scrap dealers are not authorized to deal in used motor vehicle parts, which are in Chapter 289. I will note, however, that the catalytic converters have a value of the material that it's made up with, and so it has a scrap value other than being a catalytic converter. And so I do want to make that notation for the record, the committee's record, to kind of highlight the fact that the catalytic converter is not just the entity, but it also has intrinsic value because of the material it's made of. And also, I wanted to include the Schnitzer steel Hawaii amendments as they proposed in their testimony. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair question?
Yes.
I'm not sure how many places it says catalytic converter that you're taking out, but you're still maintaining that if you cut this, you're going to be penalized, right? Or you're taking catalytic converter out, we're saving it?
No. What I'm suggesting is that the AG suggested I take out a portion of the bill that dealt with vehicle parts and not included the part about the salvage people because a catalytic converter is a part and not salvage. But I'm suggesting that it does have an intrinsic salvage value because of the precious material in it. And so I wanted to highlight that for the record.
But I guess my point is if it passes, it sends a signal to those guys who are under cutting them away that they're not going to get away with it, given what we've now spotted in putting this bill. Does that still maintains that part of it?
Yes.
Okay, good. Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, members, any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair with amendments.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 446 HT1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no?
Representative LaPresti?
Yeah?
Are you okay with this measure?
I don't like including the Schnitzer thing. I support you, Chair. You've more experience with this than I am. Maybe I don't quite grasp the issue, but thank you for the opportunity to speak. If I may add, I do worry by including the Schnitzer steel language that we're simply creating an opportunity for offense in the terms of the black market. And so now, I worry with that inclusion. All you need is one dealer on the island who's willing to take the risk, and now they can sell with impunity to Schnitzer with this inclusion. And that's what I worry about. So I don't like that, but overall, I still support it.
Okay, with all other members voting no, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. HB 1109 related to administrative rulemaking. Chair's recommendation passes out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1109 as is noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. HB 540 related to liability, vice chair.
HB 540, we're going to be amending this to add in an exception for willful misconduct, gross negligence, or recklessness. And we're also specifying that the healthcare provider must be engaged in emergent care functions that are directly related to the declared state of emergency or local state of emergency in order to further narrow this exception down to medical providers specifically addressing the state of emergency itself. These are Queen's amendments that I talked to them and modified.
Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
McKelvey's finger went up first. I just appreciate the work the vice chair is doing on this measure. I think we agree on a lot of different things that are raised up. However, my concerns, there's still concerns with giving liability immunity, especially when you have so many other workers involved in pandemics who are probably worthy of this as well. So I'll be going with reservations, but thank you for the work that you guys are doing on the measure. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Members, any other questions or comments?
Chair, I would agree with that and say that every American deserves their day in court. And until this actually has an incident where they've tried to actually say that this is going to happen, I think it's a solution in search of a problem, which in the catastrophic events that they said about people falling out of the sky or ventilators running short, I just think it's an overreach into, they probably got really good lawyers who say, look, we want to isolate ourselves from any liability. And they are taking a lot of risks. I mean, and you know, to Queen's credit, they've spent probably millions and millions of dollars that they've lost in treating the homeless, particularly in their emergency room. So there are high moral grounds, but on this one, I think they're a little bit more paranoid. For those reasons, still, reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, members. Any for?
Chair, reservations as well, please.
Representative LaPresti, reservations. Seeing none, vice chair as amended.
Chair, I would agree with that and say that every American deserves their day in court. And until this actually has an incident where they've tried to actually say that this is going to happen, I think it's a solution in search of a problem, which in the catastrophic events that they said about people falling out of the sky or ventilators running short, I just think it's an overreach into, they probably got really good lawyers who say, look, we want to isolate ourselves from any liability. And they are taking a lot of risks. I mean, and you know, to Queen's credit, they've spent probably millions and millions of dollars that they've lost in treating the homeless, particularly in their emergency room. So there are high moral grounds, but on this one, I think they're a little bit more paranoid. For those reasons, still, reservations.
Okay, thank you, members.
Chair, reservations as well, please.
Representative LaPresti, reservations. Seeing none, vice chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 540 HT1 with amendments noting the reservations of Representatives LaPresti, McKelvey, and Ward and the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any other members voting with reservations? Representative McKelvey? Any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? No for Representatives Nakamura and Tokioke?
No for Representative Nakamura? And Tokioke? Any other members voting no? Okay, with all other members voting aye, Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. Hospital 895 related to credit for time on detention prior to sentence. Chair's recommendation is to pass this out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Not Vice Chair, as is. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 895 as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. HB 722 related to human trafficking. Chair's recommendation is that we return the reporting requirements to the four minutes in the original draft of the bill as recommended to us. And otherwise pass it out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair with amendments. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 722 HD1 with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Okay, House Bill 1311 related to affordable housing. Representative Nakamura.
Thank you, Chair. Post amendments, page three, line six to eight, we're recommending that be deleted and that we add the language allowing HHFTC to address Chapter 6E HRS relating to historic preservation when funding is appropriated for each portion of the Lealea Affordable Housing Development. Similarly, on page four, we would delete sections, lines from about page, line four to nine, and we would add language in line two that says that the Lealea Affordable Housing Project in Mahina Maui shall comply with state requirements under Chapter 6E Hawaii Vice Statutes as funding is appropriated for each portion of the project to expedite the development of the project. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair as amended. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1311 HD1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. Hospital 345, House Draft 1, related to assisted community treatment. Chair's recommendation is that we take the Second Amendment recommended by judiciary, amending HRS Section 571-87 to include act cases in statutory provision. This bill is already defect dated. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 345 HD1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. House Bill 273, House Draft 1, related to license renewals is already defect dated. Chair's recommendation is to pass out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 273 HD1 as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Okay, thank you very much. Hospital 1314, House Draft 1, related to taxation. It's already defect dated. Chair's recommendation, pass it out as is. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair.
Representative Ward?
To paraphrase Mayor Paul Comey, this bill is a bit too complicated and convoluted for the betterment of people of Hawaii. For those reasons, I'll be voting no.
All right. So was that a no? Or with... Okay. Members, Representative McKelvey?
Okay, thank you. I'll be supporting your recommendation because I know this is one of these innovative ideas. It's getting a lot of eyeballs on it. My only concern, I just want to flag it, is the perhaps future committees can look at the $20,000 gross adjusted income for the senior tax credit. Maybe look at adjusting that upwards to include more of our seniors. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1314 HD1 as is, noting the no vote of Representative Ward and the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any other members voting no? No for Representative Tokioke? Any other members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. Hospital 796, House Draft 1. This bill was heard the other day. The Chair has received language from the Department of Public Safety. The legislature finds that the public has a compelling interest in the timely reporting of the deaths of inmates and others at the state's correctional centers and facilities. This compelling interest includes oversight responsibilities of the legislature. Further, they suggest a new subsection E, which reads, "Upon receipt of the report from the medical examiner, the director shall make a copy of the report required by subsection A, public and readily available, first to the family member or other person designated by the descendant, and then to the press, provided that the director may withhold the information related to the ongoing criminal investigation and prosecution or information that must otherwise remain confidential in order to avoid the frustration of a legitimate government function." Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, as amended. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 796 HD1 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. Hospital 32 related to animal fur products. Chair's recommendation is that we amend this bill to place responsibilities on the Attorney General's office as opposed to the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. And that's it. Any questions, comments? Okay, as amended, Vice Chair. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 32 with amendments noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Reservations by Representative Ward? Any other members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. House Bill 1122 related to the Hawaii Homes Commission Act. You know, this is already defect dated. The Chair would like to continue this bill for further discussion. So Chair's recommendation is to move it as is for further discussion. Members, any questions or comments?
Chair comment?
Representative Ward?
I think this is a good step forward. It's a conversation that has been avoided. And the possibility of housing the Hawaiian people becomes a little bit closer to a reality with these small incremental measurements. So greatly appreciate your decision on this. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1122 HD1 as is. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. House Bill 1124, House Draft 1, related to the Hawaii Homes Commission Act. Chair's recommendation is the same. It is defect dated, and we'd like to continue this on for further discussion. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1124 HD1 as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much. And finally, members, House Bill 1020 related to the adaptive natural resource management. It is also already defect dated. Chair's recommendation is to move it forward as is for further discussion. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 1020 HD1 as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And then, members, finally, measures previously here on the February 12, the budgets of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and Judiciary. House Bill 204, Chair's recommendation is to move this out as is. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 204 as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you. And finally, members, House Bill 185 related to the judiciary budget. Chair's recommendation, pass it out as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is. Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 185 as is, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Okay, thank you, members. That brings us to our end of our agenda. We are adjourned.